Okay. All right, welcome to day four of the third public hearing of the independent investigative panel on alleged corruption and other violations against Nigerian correctional service.
You may please have your seat.
It's been a wonderful turn of events from day one, two, three, and today is day four, the fourteenth of August, twenty twenty five. Please permit me to introduce members of the panel seated while others will join us very, very soon. We have here the director, joint services, Ministry of Interior, who is also a member of the panel, and a person of a large in our service man. Welcome, sir.[1796.00][1796.00](applause) We also have seated the second We also have seated the secretary of the panel and the person of Dr. Uju Agomo. You're welcome, ma'am. We also have fully represented here again today the officers of the Nigerian Correctional Service. You're welcome, sir. Glad to have you here. We also have in our midst representative from the Legal Aid Council of Nigeria, Lacan. You're welcome. We also have representative from FIDA. You're welcome. We have representative from Spidel N B A. You're welcome. I can also see members of the press. You're welcome. And all those who are from different various organizations, we hope to recognize you as we go ahead. Okay, so right about now, I make welcome the secretary of the panel to take over the proceedings. You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Collins Banu. Thank you. The Director, Joint Services, Ministry of Interior, who is seated acting on behalf of the chair, distinguished members from the Nigerian Correctional Service, the League Council of Nigeria, N B S, FIDA, members of the press, good morning. Today is Thursday, the fourteenth of August two thousand and twenty five, being the fourth day of the third and final public hearing. It's awesome, isn't it? We're already on number four. So I just want to thank God Almighty and thank you all also for making this process so set thus far. But we're not yet there. And I want to encourage us all to keep the momentum, to keep working hard, to keep contributing. Keep sending the link out so that those who needs to be part of our discussion and part of making contribution will also do so. Remember that the speaker's list is still open. So please do let the secretary to know if you would like to speak and indicate the particular section you would like to speak so that it will be given opportunity for a full address on that particular topic. However, remember our procedure is that after the presentation from the correctional service, it will be opened for question and clarification and comments based on the comment or presentation from the correctional service. And then if we have people who have been scheduled to speak during the indicated session, they will be given opportunity to address the panel either in person or virtually. And then the other part will be the opportunity for the panel members to ask for very specific clarification or questions or comments and give directives regarding where their decision may be or additional information they may require from the correctional service. Before we start, I want to again commend the media for their participation. I've been following up on the various media reports. And I do understand that there are also reports even by media that are not even in the house, but many of them are reporting on this. I want to also commend a particular media reportage that was very comprehensive and that particular that her report was comprehensive. So I want to encourage everyone to do likewise and I thank you all. But I also find that the summary session could maybe a good time for every media to listen, maybe record it and then take those aspect and see how you what you want to do with it. That way make it easier for you not to make an error. And if there's something you are not clear about, ask us during the last ten minutes, we normally give you if you want to use it or ask even afterwards so that we make sure we are all on the same page. I hope you already have the agenda for today. The sessions we were dealing with today will include issues relating to the use of fines and implication of imprisonment with options of fine, what statistics you have in relation to those who are charged with fine and those charged with compensation across the correctional centers in Nigeria? And what are the issues related to that? We will also look at the whole concept of implementation of non custodial measures, that is correct, community corrections, including also looking at the statistics regarding non custodial measures that have been undertaken across each of the states since coming into effect of the Nigerian Correctional Service Act of twenty nineteen. Then we follow with some discussions on the challenges faced by the Nigerian Correctional Service in respect to the implementation of non custodial measures, especially as it relates to those provisions stated under section thirty seven sub one of the Nigerian Correctional Service Act of twenty nineteen, which includes community service, parole, probation, restorative justice. Then we will want to look at some challenges of the judiciary in relation to the implementation of non custodial sentences. And we will then finalize by looking at what are the other key agencies that require support to advance implementation of non custodial measures. As we say, we'd be happy to have comments and presentation both in person here or also virtually. So having said that, I would like you to join me as I welcome the delegation of the Nigerian Correctional Service for their presentation regarding this particular matter. Correctional Service delegation, sir, on non custodial measures, yeah. Microphones. One has to do with the Directorate of Operations Fines. One has to do with Directorate of Operations is on fines. We want to beg the, okay, so that he will present first. And that we want to crave your indulgence, please, is that all the issues about non custodial should be compounded and presented at once so that. No problem. The reason usually why we do that is the separation is to help the, you know, the sequencing of our thoughts and recommendations. So it would be okay, but in discussing it, we would take these issues one by one, you know, but you can make your presentation together. So will it be the operations, the rhetoric? Okay, please help me to welcome the, is it this C G? D C G covering duties. Amen. He's not covering anything yet. Okay, whatever. It's, it's, it's going to talk to us and coming from the Directorate of Operations. And the Directorate of Operation is a real backbone. I mean, it's, it's the heartbeat of a lot of the day to day work and on the ground in the correctional centers. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm the chairman, heavily represented here by the Director, Joint Services in the Ministry of Interior, the secretary and honorable member of the investigative panel, my D C G in the Directorate of inmates, training and productivity, and of course, the representative of the D C G in the Directorate of Non Custodial. Representatives of various NGOs and development partners here, members of the fourth estate, distinguished personalities, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. The thematic area I am to talk about is use of fines and implication of imprisonment with option of fines. And then statistics of all inmates with option of fines and compensation. I proceed. Imprisonment with fine, sorry, imprisonment with the option of fine is a sentencing option where a court of law imposes an incarceration sentence that allows the convict to pay a fine instead of serving a jail time. In Nigeria, fines obtained from payments of imprisonment with the option of fines are utilized in various ways, although the specific allocation will depend on the jurisdiction of the court. Uses, revenue generation. Fines can generate revenue. For the states, which may be used to find public service or support the administration of justice. Compensation as one of the. In some cases, fines may be used to compensate victims of the offense or affected parties. And let me at this point tell you a story that would have. Sounds basically the concept of compensation. Hitherto, the culprit. Thank you, sir. You're welcome, sir. Yeah, hitherto, attention had been paid to the culprit of an offense and the issue of the victim wasn't necessarily anything to hold on to. In other words, each time an offense occurred, of course, you know that an injury would have been caused to somebody there, an injury or loss. But what was happening was that the law only focused on punishing the individual who has committed an offense and leaving the victim with nothing. The victim who has actually suffered as a result of that offense or crime with nothing. So there once upon a time, there lived a woman, it's a very popular story anyway, an old woman who owned a chicken.
You know, you know, sir, the panel wanted to just have more information about how this really affects the correctional service in terms, because there are some challenges with issues of those that they have given fines. We know that it is not the correctional service that award fines, neither would they award compensation. But once they do, those people come to you, what are the issues that you suffer relating to that? You know, there's some problem and there's statistics on that because the challenge is because of the other things we have, it's going to be a very heavy day today for us. That's why if we can just.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the, okay, let me just proceed and step down the, the story. Then compensation, then the, the next thing uses is punitive measures. The primary purpose of fines is to also serve as a punitive measure deterring an individual or deterring individuals from committing crimes. Implication of imprisonment with option of fine in Nigeria. Discretionary power. This sentencing option gives judges and magistrates discretion to determine the fine or amount an, an individual convicted of an offense is to pay. And the term also allows for flexibility in the sentencing. Punishment and rehabilitation. Imprisonment with the option of fine can prioritize punishment over rehabilitation, potentially undermining the goal of rehabilitation. What this means is that we are an individual who is capable of payment of this particular fine in an imprisonment, in a case of imprisonment with option of fine. What it simply means is that the individual pays this fine and goes home without having anything to do with a custodial center. So the idea of rehabilitation, of reformation has, has, I mean, is completely ruled out because the person will not have had anything to do with a custodial center. Inequality. This option may favor those with financial means, potentially leading to unequal treatment before the law. And then deterrence. Fines and incarcerations can aim to deter individuals from committing crimes, but their effectiveness depends on various factors, including the severity of the punishment and likelihood of detection. Benefits of fines. One, it provides an alternative to improvement, imprisonment. Two, it can also reduce prison overcrowding. Three, it allows for flexibility in sentencing and drawbacks or disadvantages. This may be seen as a get out of jail free, a get out of jail free card for those with financial means. And this can also undermine the deterrent effect of imprisonment, leading to unequal treatment before the law. Conclusion. Imprisonment with the option of fine is a complex sentencing that requires careful consideration of its implications. While it provides flexibility in sentencing, it also raises concerns about inequality and the potential for unequal treatment before the law. By understanding benefits and drawbacks of this option, the Nigerian justice, justice system can work towards more effective and fair sentencing practices. To ensure the effective use of fines and imprisonment with the options of fines, courts and policymakers should consider the following: proportionality. Fines should be proportional to the offense and the individual's financial capacity. Fairness. The imposition of fines should be fair. Thank, thank you, sir. So the, the, the next thing is that fines generally, like I have said earlier on.
Give us some recommendations. You talked about proportionality, you talked about fairness. Are there any others?
No, no, no.
It's just those two?
Yes.
Okay, sir. Okay, because we, that's your presentation.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because there's more that we need, that we have. What we really require is, you know, fines, as I said, or compensation. It's not something that is affected or activated by the correctional service. So whether it is good or bad, it's for us to engage other agencies, specifically the judiciary, not the correctional service on this. But what is important to the panel is what, who are those persons that have been sentenced to fine? And those who have been given also fine and compensation across all the correctional centers? What are the challenges that you face in relation to them? Yeah, that's, that's just the major thing we would like to, and I, I, this is a statistics that I know that the correctional service has. If we can know the current status, because there was the time the honorable minister, he shot on two dispensations, have collected that statistics, made payments of some fines, and what is the current statistics of these people? So that we can comprehensively deal with it. The G W A Council, you also collect information on those of fine and pay some. What is the statistics that you have? You will also be speaking on that. For compensation, it is actually, fines are not given to victims. It's only compensation that can be, fines is for the state. But one question I really want to ask, to, so for your clarity, if you can help, because you said it is revenue generation. So the question I note, I wrote, I say for whom? Um, it is revenue generation. So the question I note, I wrote, I say for whom?
For the government.
Which government?
The government of the Federal Republic of Nigeria.
No, the, the, of the, for, so when they get paid that fine. And the fine goes to the government even for state offenses?
Yes.
Because the bulk of the people who are in custody are closer by eighty-seven percent are there on state offenses. So when the states charges deals with it, anything comes, it comes to the state, not the federal. But most of the people on fines are environmental, you know, just when they clear on the road. It's a big picture, the guy really would like us to discuss it. And the, and the book, the money that gets there goes to the state, not the federal, and the federal is the one feeding. Yeah, so that's why it is important to look at it and the truth is. This is put in terms of non-custodial and it was done purposely because. Those persons that you see that they give an option of fine, they are low-rich persons. It means those persons don't need to be in custody. So is there a better way of managing fines? And I'm looking at Spida in Nigerian Bar Association, I'm looking at Lacan, I'm looking at Fida. That rather than take those people and put in custody, understanding the burden it has on the correctional services. Is that burden we want to hear from you? You know, because those on fine, it's, it's, it's adding to the population and this is population of those who would have been outside. In Medugri during our visits. There were instance of somebody that was given a fine of ten thousand naira or one year imprisonment. Another one, ten thousand naira or six, um, uh, six months in prison. And some other thing, and what I was needed to do is calculate the feeding. For that period, just think of, think of it, how much the federal government pays on food? For somebody per day and you turn seats, visit and then, and it even go to medication, you are correct. Not only medication, not, in terms of also the infrastructure and it is important. That we understand it fully so that we can address it because this is one group that don't need to be in custody. If somebody pays some, you can find a way of getting that money, either get them to tax or, but when you now take them for government to be feeding them. When they are already low, low-risk persons. So please, if it is possible, we need that, that information, all of the people who are on fine. Then those who are on fine and compensation. There are some that the fines is in addition to imprisonment, we can also give out that, but the consequences of that is different. Because even after paying fines, those people will stay in custody. But we're interested in those that are optional fine. And then fine and compensation, because if you pay fine, you have not paid the compensation, the compensation is what it gets to the victim. So that we know state by state and as I said, the minister had done some releases with some fine for, so we want to compare whether anything. Had changed since because this is, um, is something that will keep happening, so we need to deal with it in the root cause. But actually we'd like us also to open up because I want to really hear like legal aid council speak to us on this. Because I do know that legal aid council also release people on fine and the opinion of some others here would be important. Thank you very much, sir. But if you have, can you, you want me to have something to tell us, yes?
Please, the, the paper, the topic I have before you right now talks about uses, implication and then statistics. And that's what I say, statistics is quite a different thing from what I have seen. And that the, the, the issue of statistics should be made available to the, the panel in due course. Not now because it's not available to, 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 to. So, so, so that's the.
Thank you very much. That's very useful and because, let me tell you this very quick story, it's very important and it can verify. This is a story from the former controller of corrections, Lagos State, who later on became a DCG, Tunde Ladipo. And this happened when he was a controller of corrections in Lagos. Somebody came to him and said, he wanted to, um, celebrate his Christmas, his birthday. And wanted to feed inmates and wanted to know how many inmates he should prepare food for and things like that. But then CG, um, a controller of Lagos, uh, that, he's now retired. Um, thought that if they eat today, tomorrow night, who will also give them? And he said, there are some that are there for fines. So he told this man, there are some who have fines to pay and if they pay the fine, they will go. Can I give you the list and you decide how many of them you can assist? The man said, okay, he gave him a list. I don't know the exact number, but I knew it was over one hundred and fifty persons. That that man paid for the fines. So at the end of that period, I think close to two hundred people came out. The next month, more number came with an increased fine. It became income generation for the states. So you find out that unless you deal with it, it will always keep occurring. In Medugri during the time the panel visited, the governor had come and the governor gave, I don't know, but you can clarify maybe before we finish. The governor donated some money to every inmate. I, I can't remember how much, but please maybe you can ask the in charge and he can tell you. Of that amount, fifty-two or so of that, my figure may not be exact, but I knew it was more than fifty. Used the money that the governor gave them and paid for fine for themselves and went out. That's to tell you how this is, sir. But you can imagine that if each time you bring, because when this person comes, many of them who are minor offenders. Come in and they are mixing with hardened offenders and the additional burden on the government when they can be dealt with differently. And that's why it is really important that we really deal with this issue. Lacan, I'm still waiting. Thank you very much. No, yeah, thank you, sir, but please, we will require that, sir, let's acknowledge that. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Um, you listed. Before the legal aid council of Nigeria addresses on this issue, I want to invite the chief of the, um. Child protection unit of UNICEF, are they achieved? As I said, to please come up, UNICEF, but you sit, please, thank you, man. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir. And thank you for your support and thank you for also additional support will be expected. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Uh, he is also listed as one of the people who would address us today. Okay, Lacan, please, uh, we are discussing the issue of fines. For those who are joining online, it's about fines and what can we do to address this problem? Thank you. Legal aid council.
Good morning. So what we do, um, in legal aid council. We have the custodial center, the correction units. And the focus is to try to reduce the overcrowding in the custodial centers. And in doing that, we usually find out that there are persons there. Who is just because of these fines and compensations that they are still there. I mean, in March, earlier March this year, we had an intervention that we do with NGOs. So we visited the Suleja and the Kefi custodial centers and we were able to pay fines. And compensations for about seven in, and convicts, we had fines and compensations. And then they were released with the help of the welfare and record officers. So what we do is we get in touch with them, we get a list, we make it available to the NGOs to see what's. They can cover and accommodate. Then we now visit and have interaction with the inmates. Counsel them and see to the release. But one of the major, um, challenges we have in this area is the compensation. Sometimes we find out that a person is given the option of fine of about ten thousand. But there's a huge compensation of about nine million, one million, one point five or thereabout. And some of the NGOs and their budgets may not be able to accommodate that. And it's now the engagement we want to have with the custodial centers to know what you do. When a person who has been given an option of fine or imprisonment with compensation. Has now served the term of imprisonment or perhaps paid the fine. Will the person still be kept in custody since it's just the compensation that is remaining? That is one challenge we are having in the legal aid council to see how that can be dealt with. There's been several arguments, um, across board. Some say the person should be released and the victim in court should, um. Initiate civil, uh, action to get his compensation back. Some see it as unfair, but I think that's one way of doing it. You know, so that the custodial centers will be contested. Then the CJ of the FCT particularly in the past few months has been, um, this chief judge has been conducting jail delivery. And what we've been doing in those jail deliveries is we also invite, you know, development partners. And, um, there's always a session where he calls out for those with convi, those convicts with fines. And then compensation and it's, um, a general intervention that we receive from NGOs. Where it's been done about three times this year, the last one was in, um, June. And, um, so that's it. And legal aid also paid and pays compensation during these jail deliveries. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, thank you. I, I there's some few questions, please if you can note this. Um, is it possible to bring to the panel a list of all your records, maybe in the past, um, five years, four years, three years? That of legal aid councils intervention regarding fines, you know, um. The, the ministry itself, as I said, have done some things in terms of the fine and I think the critical issue here. Is to ask ourselves, how do we proceed with this issue? On the first count. Somebody was seen as not needing to go to custody if they can pay. Which means they are not persons of, that are at risk for the society. And of course, many of times, some of the fines are not things they could afford to pay because if they could pay it, they wouldn't be there. So either on environmental issues or whatever, because we've seen quite a lot of those cases, maybe they are hocking during sanitation or whatever. So we need to ask ourselves, if these people are put in custody because they could not pay whatever that money is. Fifty thousand, ten thousand, one hundred thousand, whatever, twenty thousand, thirty thousand. We then have to ask ourselves, what is the justification? Of moving this who can pay this into a custody, knowing that they are not people who are at risk? Is there other means to ensure that these payments can be collected maybe in one way or the other, rather than doing this? Secondly, when they are there, who bears their cost of being there? Is it the same federal government who will not even benefit from the fines that they pay? So we need to ask that critical question. And then the third part is this very important dimension that you have brought. Because you are saying pay fine or you stay this number of period. So the person doesn't have the money, ten thousand, twenty, whatever it is, so he stays, stays out the term he's supposed to be if you don't pay the fine. But the compensation is still hanging, compensation is to the victim. So if you continue to keep the person there, apart from the danger and the burden in terms of the population, it is also making government spend money. So again, it is something that we may need to look at. And can, Njembay Association, Spida, Fida, is that something you would like to speak on this matter? Because I, again, as I said, this is crucial.
But what we, what we usually do, the little we can actually do is when the matters, we're still handling them in courts. We take steps to, you know, push for non-custodial, um, sentencing. That's what we do when we find out that this person is a, is not a risk factor, uh, to the society and, and be allowed. We've had instances where we are obliged to do that, works in hospitals or, or please.
That's community service, yeah.
Publicity service.
But that is when the legal aid council is inside the court, because when you are not in the court, the same thing happens. Okay, if it's possible to give us that list, it would be very helpful, please. Um, and it's again, perhaps the MBA, you can speak to this issue and let us know whether, is there something you may need to do? With the judiciary around this, or if the, if the MBA or Spida can tell us what it can do on this?
Thank you very much, ma'am. Um, I, I love the fact that legal aid brought this other dimension to this conversation. Especially on the part of if someone has already spent his term, why is the person still in custody? It's a huge issue, especially when we talk about the role that Spida plays in the NBA as a public interest, uh, you know. One of its roles is public interest and so, um, I can just speak to the fact that. This is a, this is something that we would like their response on. Then that would also inform the kind of actions that we take from the NBA because it would now amount to injustice. If they are, if they have served their terms and they are still kept behind bars. But we also know that if, on, on the issue of compensation, someone does not need to be in, in prison, or sorry, in custody. To be able to pay the compensation. So there, there should be a mechanism for ensuring that every compensation is paid. And that one will now be, um, in, in a collaboration between the service and the court itself. Because the court also has to have a form of, um, um, oversight over this particular, um, issue. So that, that's what I can say.
So, um, uh, Spida, again, we'll come back to you because all of the things you are saying. The correctional service will not be the ones to open the door to say, go or let's to the court. So again, Spida, this may be something you can step in, it could be find what can be done. Somebody has even recommended that instead of having the states do this, that you have a situation where the states can write them off. We need to think about how do we sustain this on a longer term? Because it's not sustainable. Each time you pay fine, next time you pay fine, so we need to deal with that. So we call the correction.
It's also an angle to this conversation while we're looking for solution. First is that incarceration is not only about risk to society. It's also part of corrective action. I don't want to say punitive action. Uh, it depends on how the judge sees the offense. Uh, sometimes it could be that there are things that looks like deliberate act. That they want to be able to use that to deter others. That's one aspect. Then the second aspect is, um, the victim, why will it be that when government takes their fine? The victim now will continue to suffer. The, the person who committed the crime will be released. And when he goes back to the society and the victim is looking at him and there's nothing compelling him to pay. They, he can never feel that justice has been done to him. In other societies where government have access to accounts of individuals. They can take money directly from the account and pay. Uh, because we've seen cases where awards were made to parents that are abandoned or men that abandoned their families. To take care of their wives or their children and they refuse to pay because there's nothing government can do to them. But outside this country, it's not done so. Wherever that man has money in his account, government can block that money and take and pay. So I'm looking at us adding all of this as part of the solution. So that whatever solution we are profiling will be solution that we work and deliver justice both to the victim. And also protect the society and deter others.
But, but I'm curious, you know, you, you are talking about a situation where, um, let's say the person is not an indigent. Imagine the situation of indigents, especially people who do not even have bank accounts. So it becomes tricky, that's the question.
Uh, we will wait to see what Lacan will submit to the panel that will be useful. Uh, Spida, this is, um, a very important issue to look at. And because the fact about this, it's, you are talking about the impact on the correctional service in terms of population. The cost on the government, so there must be a creative way to address the issue of compensation, to address the issue of fine without even the person going to custody. There's no justification for those people to be in custody at all. So you need, they said imprisonment must be seen as a last resort, but let's, it's, it's, you can help us to see how with this, that it can be dealt with. We call the correctional service to make their presentation on non-custodial measures. But before then, I would like to invite the United Nations. But before then, I would like to invite the United Nations Office on Drugs and Crime to take your two seats up there. Okay, sir. O- okay, sir.
Thank you, I'd like to uh respond nicely to the submissions of members of Fida and Legal Aid, I suppose. Uh as regards the issue of uh compensation. Uh practically, because the Nigerian Correctional Service does not have the power to keep in custody any any individual who doesn't have a valid document for surgery. And so when an individual who is sentenced with option of fine and compensation, uh number one, if the individual is unable to pay fine, it means naturally that he or she will serve the sentence. And then at the end of the sentence, there is this compensation waiting, assuming it's option of fine and compensation. Now, before the final day of the jail term, the officials of the correction, of the custodial services, of the custodial centers are are expected and of course they do intimate the courts that have actually sentenced these individuals to talk to them on the issue of compensation, to report that issue of compensation that look, this individual is ending his jail term on so 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 date, tomorrow or next and all of that. And then he has a compensation to pay, so what happens? Two options, two things usually happen. One, sometimes the warrants will come with compensation and where the individual is unable to pay compensation before the end of the jail term, that compensation is converted into a a jail term, sorry, into a jail term on the warrant. And then where that particular uh order is not given on the warrant, the uh offic- uh officers report this matter before the court that has actually con- convicted this individual and talk to them on the issue of the compensation. And then it's the 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 judge or the magistrate that will either convert the something, uh sorry, the compensation to a jail term or uh order the release of this particular individual. But it will interest you again to see that uh the act of twenty fifteen that we have to do is actually undergoing some amendments. And part of this amendment is the issue that borders on this compensation. And what is it all about? The amendment, if actually uh adopted by the legislative arm of the of the government, will have, will have in the sense that it talks about creating a victim compensation trust fund to be, to be funded from the federal allocation. So what this means is that if an individual at the end of his jail term who has a compensation to pay, is unable to pay, the individual may be asked to go on some service, you know, that will yield uh proceeds, money or something. But then it does not really matter if the individual is asked to go to farm and then he will be paid and then the proceeds from that farming is paid into the government. What matters is that the the compensation to the victim will be paid from this trust fund without having anything to uh do with the inmate now, who 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 is unable to pay. But the inmate also will now go scot-free. The inmate will perform some other duties that will probably generate some money, no matter how little. And then the money generated goes into the victim trust fund, uh something else to keep revolving. But generally, the 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 main scale of the of the trust fund uh uh of the trust fund is money from the federal uh allocation in in uh for so, I mean, to to be used in that particular sense. So so that's about the compensation.
Thank, thank you, this is a very, very important information you have provided and very, very valid. Um the the first is the fact that the correctional service will only work with warrants. And it is therefore the duty of the court to be made to do what needs to be made. So which again goes back to the same point to MBA Speeder. We need to make sure that the courts are not using imprisonment with official fines because it's it doesn't help. Now, the point about this uh uh s- system to ensure that people's compensations are paid is really good. Uh it can also be expanded to include issue of fine. People have argued that why do you need to take somebody who is not at risk to the society? And put them in custody for government to feed them and then they stay out the term they would have paid. Meanwhile, you have incurred more money in taking care of them. Why don't you, the same principle you have explained. Why you don't you do what needs to be done to get them to work? They could be doing community service, when they finish the term of that, you now make them to be doing things that they will be paid. Can be a special kind of community service where that payment or whatever they can earn, but it goes straight into a particular cost. That makes more uh more more sense. Thank you, I think it is a very useful process that people need to look at. And not just at the federal, perhaps with the state correctional service laws being made. We should also encourage it to be implemented at at the at the state's level. So Nigerian Correctional Service, please, it's go ahead now.
Uh before then, sir, the panelists. The last year, the total of twenty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-nine inmates were released as a result of payment of fine and compensation. Other data will follow later. Especially on the total number of inmates sentenced with option of fine, total number of inmates with compensation, these ones will follow later. I also want to urge the panel and the public here that payment of fines and uh and the compensation is a very charitable thing to do. It helps the federal government a lot. But when an individual wants to do it, it should follow the example of the Honorable Minister. Whereas inmates were chosen and the compensation, the fine were paid and the inmates were even given repatriation money. So we 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 are grateful that this is being done because the less number of inmates we have under incarceration, the less burden and the less opportunity for us to do proper rehabilitation. Because even before the twenty nineteen act, the philosophy of Nigerian Correctional Service has always been imprisonment as a punishment and not for punishment. Once it is pronounced, it is already punishment, whether the person comes to the correctional center or not. It's already taken care of. So it's assistance from the public, thank you very much.
Please, with that statistics, it would be good to let us know when you bring, to let us know the statistics of the number that were attached to the ones that the main honorable minister paid for and the amounts of money being put to. The point being made here is that it is not sustainable.
Yes.
We need to address this point and they don't need to come to custody to find that payment paid. Because there is also additional cost the government is going through to feed them, to take care. So we need to think out of the box, what can help us? We, you know, law is there to serve man, not the other way. And if a law is having an issue, we look at how to address it. So that statistics you are giving us, sir. If you can give us for to show the total and then to show the one that the minister did, because the minister and the total amount, that is the amount that was paid. The minister also gave transportation money to those that were going, so it's not just about the payment of staff. So we need to also see that.
Yes.
So, yes, but
I I was in the thick of it.
Yeah.
I was in the FCT.
Mm-hmm.
I was the one that the minister gave almost ten million naira to.
Yeah, but if we
So the total number.
Yeah, if we can know the total number, but that to tell you how much that is being spent. Now, this is because it was paid. There are, when the fines are given and they have not paid it, yeah? They stay on and government will still be feeding them. Okay, I will now invite you to give us your presentation on the non-custodial measures. You can come to the podium, thank you, sir.
Good morning, all. I stand in the ready established protocol, I'm Tony Akland, I'm the Controller of Corrections uh of the Non-Custodial Directorate. I'm standing in for uh Assistant Control General, is unobligably absent. I intend to, I will be making synopsis of our presentation on implementation of non-custodial measures, community corrections, community corrections, including presentation statistics and non-custodial measures that have been undertaken across each state. So ahead, I will um be making this presentation without showing the various aspects, the thematic areas in from the various states, but I'll be giving cumulative statistics as relates to all those developments. We will be making, of course, after now, try to make the state's presentations available to the community. Um the Nigerian Correctional Service Act came into being at the first of July nineteen, twenty nineteen. And it came with it um introduced the non-custodial measures. And this is found under section thirty-seven to forty-three, I guess, of the Nigerian Correctional Service Act. Um I I want to tell the House that since the advent of the non-custodial measures, Nigerian Correctional Service, indeed, it has helped to decongest the Nigerian correction, the 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 service, the our our correctional uh centers. And those four themes, we talk about community service. At the introduction of that community service, thank God, tha- that time Nigeria was faced with COVID nineteen. And that came as an option to imprisonment. And after COVID nineteen, you know, we all attest to the fact that no custodial facility or no, yeah, no custodial center was infected with COVID nineteen. Because instead of bringing those people into the correctional centers, they were placed in community service and that helped to, you know, mitigate whatever challenges that would have happened during that time as a result of COVID nineteen, the correctional centers. And then we, the other thematic area is probation. I, one thing that has devolved us sincerely is um, you know, from the judiciary. Most times, my experience also shows that a lot of inmates, we thought that before now, there has, you know, the probation orders would have been more, you know, um
Would have been more. But unfortunately, most courts have not been granting probation orders. And sometimes, you know, you approach the court, they will tell you either that the substantive laws have not really been able to capture probation orders sufficiently enough for them to implement it. Some other courts, some other uh state judiciary, they are also trying, but it has not been what we expected it to be sincerely. And then uh parole, parole is a court, not, is a prison best sentence, so to say. Because is, we are not expecting the judiciary to come and tell us what to do. But there are provisions, we have protocols on parole. Um we also have statistics on parole, I'll be giving much later. But the challenge also is that um we have parole boards, boards already established in the various states of the federation, including FCT. Uh but um at the national headquarters, where recommendations, you know, are supposed to be sent to national headquarters for final approval by the CG. I think um we are, we we are yet to form the technical committees who are to sit on these recommendations and then eventually grant parolees, so uh you know, uh uh those 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 prospective parolees. So we have a little bit of challenge, but some other states also, they have gone very far in the implementation of parole. The other aspect is restorative justice. We have gone beyond what the law says, even in the Nigerian Correctional Service. You know, the law says restorative justice can only be carried out, you know, not on crim- on very serious criminal matters, especially capital offenses. But with that also to tell our staff that it's based on morality, that even inmates on dead warrant, can you also kickstart the process of restorative justice? Not necessarily with a view that these people should be removed out of custodial centers, but that relationships should be restored. And I can tell you that we've been doing that. And I thank God also that um the various states, they are commit, they are beginning to form uh restorative justice centers. And that would, of course, facilitate, help us, you know, to, you know, ensure that relationships, people take responsibilities, whatever actions, particularly those offenders that, you know, we have done. And then on um, yeah, I think those are the four themat- themes, thematic areas. But others, we've started with the issue of fines. We've uh I I think um it has been carried on successfully. I must say at this point that we have some impediments and it's very, very obvious. Since twenty nineteen till then, I'm sure the Secretary of this Committee, she's well at vast, we thought our impediments. And sometimes we, they will tell us that please don't talk about it, we know. But I'll still want to, in passing, say, say say that one of the major impediments is uh the death of funds. In the seven hundred and seventy-four local governments of this of this country, we are spread all over. And sometimes you beg a local government chairman to give you an office, he gives, but no seats, nothing to carry out those exercises. And that has been a serious impediment, besides the fact that, you know, uh nobody treats, so to say, allocations deliberately made for restorative justice. When I go through the Nigerian Correctional Service Act, I saw a special fund to be provided for. I was wondering, I said, special fund. It means that there should be another fund before a special fund. And for me, I've 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 had cause to interrogate that provisions. To the extent that I said this is not precluding the federal government from making deliberate funds to Nigerian Correctional Service for for non-custodial services. Special funds could still come up. You know, that you, where you interface with international partners, interface with other NGOs, can you make special funds into this fund? To be able to augment whatever federal government is providing. But it appears as if we are holding on to the issue of social songs to the detriment, to the extent that funds are not deliberately being made available for the smooth, seamless takeoff of uh Nigerian, of of non-custodial services. But be that as it may sincerely, we are making, in spite of those obvious um obvious challenges, we are making headway. And then the other aspect I'll be showing quickly also is in terms of staff disposition. In the, you know, the statistic you get to understand that, I think one of the states, either Imo State, you only have about twelve staff handling non-custodial services. It's it's it's, you you cannot expect to carry out effectively non-custodial services with twelve staff. I don't know how many local government Imo State has, but I can tell you that I'm sure it's more than twelve, twelve local government. That means some other local government do not have non-custodial, non-custodial staff. And that speaks volumes. But if we want this law to be implemented, to be seen to be what it's supposed to be, then we need to be very, very deliberate about employing staff, more staff. The five thousand approved by federal government to be employed by Nigerian Correctional Service, we appreciate that. We appreciate the, the first that we appreciate even the least. But sincerely, we wish, this is my personal, personal, very personal, I wish that that could be in peace. To be able to take care of the, the debt in in the staff disposition in the Nigerian Correctional, in the non-custodial service and Nigerian correctional service. And then um the, it says the challenges, I've just, just said some of the few challenges. And then we also talk about other key agencies. Like I said, the judiciary, they are key. Another possibility, agencies, they are very, very key in non-custodial services. But one thing we've noticed But one thing we've noticed, I just said in person, one thing we've noticed over time is that most, most head of judiciary will tell you, or most judicial officers, they will tell you that they don't have lost enough copious provision to back up this implementation of non custodial services. Um, we have had cause to interfere to some chief judges of the state. And just to, to give us a chance, we've made provisions either as sentencing practice or yeah, sentencing direction, guidelines. Some have done that very graciously to us. Others, up to now, they've not been able to carry it through. And, um, I think that's one of the major challenges, except there's an overhaulage of the provision of our laws, codification, to ensure that non custodial services is being carried. And thank God, Malga, who was saying about, you know, there's, I think, uh, uh, the the Administration of Criminal Justice Act is being reviewed. And one other area that to me is the area of non custodial services. And I will hope that when eventually is, is reviewed, of course, the whole responsibility is placed on the Nigerian Correctional Service. Nigerian Correctional Service is sadly the responsibility of ensuring that the full implementation is done by them, all those thematic areas. Prosecuting agencies, we need to cooperate to ensure that this is not a one unit, uh, issue. It's for all of us. And it's also with a view that instead of congesting our custodial centers, we should come together, particularly on issues that we can handle them outside, like it's been done by some other states. I think, um, and there are also non state actors, actors that we could also, we need their cooperation, particularly the vigilante groups. Because of the inadequacy of staff around us, we have, um, sometimes had cause to use vigilante group in executing some of the court sentences because we don't have staff. We've had cause to say, please, vigilante members, can you assign somebody to, you know, supervise committee sentencing and all those things? And then we have traditional institutions, we also need them. One of the areas that, when, when we, when we began to talk with, um, with some inmates on, um, on restorative justice, we also have cause to approach some institutional, traditional institutions to talk to them. That yes, this guy would have committed offense against a individual, indeed against the community. But he has shown some remorse. Can we talk together? And I think, uh, it's producing very well. So, uh, the summary of all that we're saying is that non custodial measures is helping the Nigerian Correctional Service. It's helping indeed to decongest Nigerian Correctional Service. But that there are so many challenges and if together we want this thing to work at the various levels, I think, um, we need the support of every stakeholder to be able to ensure that these services are carried out and of course, providing necessary impetus for us to go on. Thank you. And then sorry, the statistics, let me just quickly go through the statistics. Monthly statistics according to months for twenty twenty-five. That is, uh, from January to June. I'll be giving it quickly. Um, community service, male, six thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. And then female, four thousand seven hundred and, so, so, sorry, four hundred, four hundred and seventy-nine. Parole, male, ten. Probation, five hundred and seventy-six. Female, forty-two. Restorative justice, one thousand three hundred and ninety-two. Male, female, five hundred and forty-six. Then any other non custodial measures. Uh, male, four hundred and forty. Female, uh, one hundred and thirty-two. The total is male cumulatively is non custodial sentencing is, um, or sentence, it's nine thousand two hundred and seven. Female is one thousand one hundred and ninety-nine. Total is ten thousand four hundred and six. And then, like I said, I wanted to give the statistics of staff disposition to be able to understand how you know, the, the non custodial, uh, sent, uh, non custodial measures is varying. Okay, let me also give quickly before I go to that, summary of non custodial measures from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. Community service, male, thirty-six thousand four hundred, seven hundred and forty. Female, two thousand one hundred and fifteen. Total thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-five. Two, parole, three hundred and fifty-two, male. Female, seventy-nine. Total is four hundred and thirty-one. Probation, one thousand eight hundred and nineteen, male. Female, two hundred and seven. Total, two thousand and twenty-six. Restorative justice, male, six thousand two hundred and fifty-one. Female, two thousand one hundred and seven. Total is eight thousand three hundred and fifty-eight. Any other non custodial measure. Male, four thousand three hundred and one. Female, five hundred and fifty-four. Total, four hundred and eighty, four thousand four, eight hundred and fifty-three. The total for male is forty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-three. Female, five thousand and sixty. Total is fifty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-three. And then the staff disposition. The, the highest state, the highest number of staff is, uh, KB with one hundred and thirty-one staff. The lowest is Imo, only seven, seven staff. That's to just emphasize that we don't have enough staff to carry on this enormous responsibility. So we call on all the stakeholders in whatever capacity. Let's help to us to ensure that this, this new area of administration of criminal justice.
Do you have the figure for the total staff?
Total staff, yes, the total staff is, uh, one thousand five hundred and sixty-three.
Is that the total you have, not the total that you need?
No, that's total. Yes.
Submitting to us, we would like to see that, all the states, okay. To ask, I think the chair would like to say some things to you, then we'll come back to, to you after the comments there.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, when you are making a presentation, you made some things that I took notes of. And I need you to explain to us what you mean that by not having enough laws for implementing non custodial service when there is an act on non custodial service. Then who is to provide the fund and the special funds? I'll keep throwing back these questions to you because you need to make your budget re-provision and escalates to the CG. And also talking about the staffing needs. Again, you have to make provision for your staffing needs. Because the five thousand you have to recruit for twenty twenty-four, I expect that based on your priority, that's how the vacancy spread should go. So it's important that while you submit your um, reports to the investigative panel, you must make adequate provision for your staffing needs. You are aware that twenty twenty-six budget for both for personnel and, um, capital is ongoing. So please make your submission to the CG. Because that will guide in prioritizing your five thousand vacancy that is to be occupied. Because if you don't, if you populate the five thousand with general duties, then it's not federal government problem, it's your problem. You haven't looked at your establishment needs based on your priorities. So please, your human resource department should do the needful. So that we gradually begin to fill those vacancies, um, based on needs assessment. Okay. Uh, with your kind permission, I need to step up for a national program for an hour and I'll be back. But the rest of the team will be here with us. Thank you.
So what I would suggest is that let's prove on in terms of discussing this matter. UNICEF is scheduled to make a speech. And, um, if they will have time to stay till the chair comes, I would propose we defer your speech till the chair comes back. So, um, we would, you want to give an additional information? So give us, because we would like to interrogate this presentation. And if there are people who would like to ask questions and for clarifications from the presentation of correctional service, please do get ready for that. Go ahead, please.
Uh, my, the additional information I want to give is that, uh, it is unfortunate that, uh, judiciary are not here. And, uh, we are always, uh, heaping blames on them. We are not just heaping blames, we felt that at our level, the necessary intervention, we cannot make it. We want this panel to make far reaching recommendations on how we can be assisted. Because there are several furors that we have been attacked that the non custodial measures are not supposed to be administered by Nigerian Correctional Service. We have had an issue with some jurisdictions. But I want, what I want to bring out is that the whole purpose, or another, as, an aspect of the reason why the non custodial is there is that if somebody commits offense, it's not the quality of the job to be done. It is like to naming and shaming. If you have a uniform personnel supervising gutter cleaning, even they passersby, we know that this person must have committed offense. If it is left to the court, in my humble opinion, and not sentence somebody once they do the sentencing, they should hands off so that they allow us to do our job. Some courts say they have dedicated staff to supervise, uh, uh, non custodial sentences. So like community service and what, and others. So even this, uh, uh, restorative justice, that has been a very serious debate. When we go for any review of these, uh, policies and laws, the court, the judges, it is very difficult for an individual like us to stand up in the face of, uh, senior judicial officers and argue with them. So if there is intervention, like the restorative justice, for example, there was a forum recently, not quite two weeks now. We were invited, we went there and, uh, the judges took the center stage and said, restorative justice is not supposed to be perfected or supervised by the Nigerian Correctional Service. So since this is a federal government law, it has been signed, a federal government act. It was a bill at the National Assembly, it was signed, it has been signed into law. It should allow these things to survive, it should allow you to work. So maybe there is delegation of the interior supposed to talk at the highest level to the judiciary. These things are in the laws, it should allow us to do our job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. We're going to discuss, that's today's all about for us looking into non custodial measures. And we're going to do that. But I want to first ask whether there are people in the, um, in the audience who have some questions to ask the correctional service, um, yeah, for that break down, state by state. You know, if you have some questions to ask, um, but also I would ask, and I would, um, so yeah, there's some questions, if not, we, the panel would, um, okay, we have prison fellowship Nigeria, we have feeder. Any other person, okay, feeder, you can go ahead, take your microphone. As soon as that, please give, give, um, a mic to prison fellowship.
Okay, uh, good morning, once again. Uh, so for me, my question is, um, relating to the judiciary. I wanted to find out if the correctional, um, center or service has a relationship with the judiciary when it comes to sentencing. Because we find that, um, most times when it relates to fines, it's usually given to first time offenders, quote unquote. So, um, if the correctional service, excuse me, if the correctional service has data, um, then we'll know whether they're really, um, first time offenders. So I wanted to find out. When sentencing, does the judiciary reach out to the correctional service to find out, um, uh, you know, if they are first, first time offenders or not? Um, secondly, I wanted to speak on, um, the training and awareness that is currently being raised. And all I hear is, um, training and awareness for, um, the judiciary. So I'm looking at partnership with the Nigerian National Judicial Institutes and then ways that feeder can collaborate with the correctional service in providing that for, um, say, the judiciary. Thank you.
We'll come back to you, okay? They, they want, feeder wants to know the level of your relationship with the judiciary. Prison Fellowship Nigeria, please. Oh, prison, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to respond? If you feel there's something you would like to respond to, then the panel would want to engage you on this because this is, there is a lot of stuff we would like to speak to you.
Thank you, the secretary, and thank you for the various submissions we've had. I'd like to briefly respond to the issue of enforcement of these non custodial measures as regards the supervision of some of these measures. I, I just like to say that the, the conflict the Nigerian Correctional Service is having with the judiciary as regards the enforcement of these, of some of these measures is actually occasioned by the laws themselves, by the acts. Because if you go to, I think, section four, six, one of Acta twenty twenty five. Provides for, provides that the registrar of a court where an individual is sentenced to community service shall supervise the enforcement or the community service activities in that jurisdiction. And then if you go to the Nigerian Correctional Service Act twenty nineteen, from sections thirty seven to forty, something, there about. Where the law actually vests the power exclusively of administration of non custodial service to the Controller General of Corrections. So where we are having issues is because we have conflict of laws. But then, thank God, thank God, this current position is also part of the things that is being reviewed in the amendment that is currently going on in the, okay, that has gone, I, I think it's even before the National Assembly. So hopefully, because I, I was a member of, I attended that particular review exercise or process. But, and, and in that amendment document, the, the, the power to enforce non custodial measures or to administer non custodial service is completely removed from the judiciary and vested in the Nigerian Correctional Service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
All right, I think there is a serious understanding between the courts and the Nigerian Correctional Service, particularly when it comes to sentence. Because some courts do ask us for pre-sentence reports. And this has helped to a large extent to inform the kind of sentence they are passing. So we, we're into that together with them and, and then the, the other aspect of. You know, the general thing about the laws, providing for non custodial and that some other jurisdiction have not really appreciated it so much. Because we can understand, you know, because lawyers, they can also take up appeals on issues that are not provided for in the law. And then the judge, sitting judge is giving a sentence based on it. So we, we do appreciate the fact that unless and until such provisions are made for them as a cover, they will find it very difficult to implement some of the non custodial measures. Thank you.
Okay, I do have some questions to ask, but I would like to. I would like to perhaps, because you raised a very important issue. And that important issue is in regards to what you call the conflict of laws, yeah? And lawyers may speak to the fact that whenever there is a conflict of law. If those laws are of the same level, the newest takes precedence. Except if the contradiction is with the constitution. Because if it is with the constitution, the other law, irrespective of whether you had made yesterday, becomes null and void to the extent of that inconsistency. The Administration of Criminal Justice Act of twenty fifteen and the administrat- Administration of Criminal Justice laws of many states, perhaps with the exception of Lagos and Annabras, which had the administration of criminal justice law before the twenty fifteen. Every order or administration of criminal justice law that came before then seemed to have copied verbatim. Which includes also copy, if there is an error, you copy verbatim, you know? The truth of the matter is, the law that placed the responsibility on the Nigerian Correctional Service was a twenty nineteen law. That's after twenty fifteen. And the drafters of the twenty fifteen Administration of Criminal Justice Acts could not, I mean, I'm sure that it was all good intentions, there's, there's no way it can be in a vacuum. So I believe that the issue of talking about the court taking the responsibility of setting up a community service center and designating supervisors from the court was just maybe trying to find a way of dealing with that gap. You were correct, and you mentioned it, there is no way that the same agency that determines the decision of what the sentence is. You cannot be the one to supervise, just like judicial officers are not the ones supervising those they have sentenced to ten years imprisonment, three years imprisonment. There is a reason why there is this separation of, of rules. The same way that the correctional service, it should not be the service that is supposed to make the laws. You know, you can't say, oh, the person have a headache, so you cannot do community service for two weeks, do it one week. It's not for you to do, you go back to the court. So the court can now vary that decision if they so wish. But I, 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 I think it is important to state that, but before we go into the presentation that you made. There is something I'm thinking that we could use this opportunity to quickly, I do, because I very briefly decided to just check. I said, the countries, the different countries of the world and who is supervising their non custodial measures. So this may be a time to take note. United Kingdom, England and Wales is being supervised by Harmesses Prisons and Probation Service. United States at the federal level, you have the US probation and pre-triar sentence service system. Now, for, and, and, and that, you know, in Norway, that, that pre-triar service system is actually something that was set up separately as an administrative office from the court. Then it says the responsibility for supervising individuals on probation and pre-triar release in federal jurisdiction. Those that supervise, only those on probation and those on pre-triar release. Norway, it is supervised by the Norwegian Correctional Service. And they oversee both custodial and non custodial sentences, including probation and community service. Philippines, parole and probation administration. And they supervise offenders serving non custodial sentences via community-based programs. In Europe, the EU and Council of Europe, they set up certain framework that they are using. And it says in most European countries, probation service is handled by the probation, probation supervision is handled by the probation agencies. And these are on, is actually under Ministry of, sometimes also under Ministry of Justice. Now, I give you these following countries. Albania, General Directorate of Probation Service. Austria, the organization supervising is called New Start. Armenia, probation service. Belgium is said Houses of Justice Communities and French, in different dignity, have French, Flemish and German. Bulgaria is supervised by General Directorate of Executions of Sentences. In Croatia, Directorate for Prison System and Probation. Czech Republic is supervised by Probation and Mediation Service. Denmark is supervised by Department of Prisons and Probations. Estonia supervised by Ministry of Justice. Finland supervised by Prisons and Probation Service. France supervised by the Directorate of Administration for Penitentiary. Germany supervised by Federal and Regional Justice Ministries plus Social Services Organizations. Ireland supervised by the Probation Service of Ireland. Italy supervised by Department of Juvenile and Community Justice, which is under Ministry of Justice. Latvia, it is supervised by the State Probation Service. Malta supervised by the Department of Probation and Parole of the Home Affairs and National Security. Netherlands is supervised under the Ministry of Security and Justice. And Norway supervised by the Norwegian Correctional Service. Poland, Portugal, Romania, Slovakia, Slovenia. Spain is supervised by designated probation units. Sweden is supervised by Swedish Prisons and Probations Administration. Switzerland is supervised by Swiss Center of Expertise in Prisons and Probation. Turkey is supervised by General Directorate of Prisons and Detention Houses. And then Northern Ireland is supervised by Probation Board for Northern Ireland, which is actually a non departmental public boarding. Now, if you go through this, you will notice that quite a lot of these institutions. Ukraine is supervised by Center of Probation. I've already told you the island is prisons and probation service. In oceanian and Asia Pacific, for example, in Philippines is by the parole and probation administration. In New Zealand is by New Zealand Probation Service, which is part of the Department of Corrections. Yeah. So again, it is, as we said earlier, you find that there are different agencies that are supervising. But quite a big chunk of them are being supervised by organizations that are mainly connected to corrections. There are some institutions or some countries where custodial and non custodial are separate agency. There are some where they are together. So, but the important thing is wherever it's functioning, you want to make sure that it's, you know, it has all that it takes to function well. The chairperson did ask a question, and why she asked that question was when you were making your presentation. You had indicated that there is no law. So she wanted to know how that speaks to the issue regarding part two of the twenty nineteen Nigerian Correctional Service Act. And to, to ensure that at least there is some law. You know, yes, you have mentioned some parts where there is contradiction. Then when you were talking about restorative justice, you did mention that you have gone beyond what the law says. And you said you have gone beyond what the law says because you are administering it for different persons, including senior, senior of serious offenses. And I just wanted to bring to your attention section forty three, sub three of the Nigerian Correctional Service Act to speak specifically in terms of the coverage of restorative justice. It says that restorative justice may occur, A, at pre-triar stage, meaning the court hasn't come in then. B, at trial stage, meaning you are before the court. C, during imprisonment. And D, which means you have already been sentenced and in imprisonment, yeah? And then D, at post imprisonment, you have finished serving your terms. So the point here being said, it is that the, the, the spirit behind this law recognizes that not, restorative justice can serve both as an alternative but also as something that adds value to the administration of justice. Irrespective of what kind of offense you have been charged. So under this, you are covered for what you are doing. So I just wanted to mention that, but there are specific issues that we need to bring to, to mention, to discuss. But I think it would be good to call for presentation. But first, let me just note some of the questions that we would like information on. You had mentioned some of the challenges that some organizations are thinking that correctional service is not supposed to play in this role. But you see, under restorative justice, you have the number of persons who you can, or the kind of persons you can provide this restorative justice to. I would, that is being facilitated also by the correctional service. Is it possible to get some indication of a data that tells us how this, how section forty three, three, A to D? Which means, for example, how many of the restorative justice sessions you've heard, which were provided for those who were on post imprisonment? That they have finished their sentence? Or those who are there during their sentence or when they were in your court study? You know, and then like that, that will enable us to know, because for example, on forty three, three, D. I'm sure no court or anybody will stop you from doing restorative justice too. So want to know if it's possible to provide that statistics, that would be also helpful. Now. You, the, I think clearly there is, I'm suspecting, I may be wrong, maybe there is some misunderstanding. Because the implementation of non custodial is supposed to be done very much collaboratively. Okay? So you may not have all the expertise that are required, but you have to learn to collaborate with those who have. So I want to ask some few questions. First, let me start with probation, because you'll see that the record you also gave on probation is not so high. And I would be surprised what and how these probation that are mentioned that have been occupied. Even the Administration of Criminal Justice Act of twenty fifteen mentions that in terms of probation. You have to have the designated name of the probation officer, who has to be of the same gender with the person affixed by the court. So the, the natural process means that the non custodial officers who have been designated as probation officers, their names, their gender, their location needs to be presented to the court. So the question is, does the, have the Nigerian Correctional Service done this? And if not, is this something you may wish to consider? Because it means that the court can't say, this is a probation officer, when there's no name. You may wish to let us know, and if you have done it, please note this question so that we can get us. Because when the information is getting, especially written to, to some extent, it's easier for us to note. But the ones who can give us information right away, you will appreciate it. Let me. You, you spoke about the local government, because the, when you were speaking, you talked about the challenges. And you said, since twenty nineteen to date, there's some, you used the word, I think, TEART of, I think it's, yeah? T E A R T of funds. Means, I don't know much of English, but I want to know, does it mean it's small or does it mean it's none? It's more, so we need to know, no, 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 you should use the word, that, that's your English, you used it. So we want to know how much, how much is that small? Year by year, it's important to know, please. We will need to have that, and you can bring it tomorrow up for the closer, which would be good to know, which actually, because it's good to really deal with this issue. And I think this is not just for you, it's speaking generally. If we have a law as comprehensive and as beautiful as what seem to be coming out from this, from our discussion since Monday, as a nation. We need to, I mean, if you have a law, the law itself like that can't do anything unless it's activated. So we need to find out how much exactly you have been given since twenty nineteen, even if it's since twenty twenty. Regarding non cust-, non custodial measures implementation. And how many of your staff have been trained on non custodial? You need to let us know, month by month. If you say it's new, let us know, nil, nil, or one naira, we want to know. Because that way it is easier. But then, if, because the chairperson- Because that way it is easier, but then if, because the chairperson did explain. That budget comes from what you submit. So if you also need to let us know which of each of these years, when did you submit something on it? So whether you submitted and it was removed, or you went, or the, yes, you didn't submit, so we know where to put our blames on. And secondly, sir, we need to have the number of correctional officers that have been trained on non-custodial measures. It is important to to note that. Number three, you have the non-custodial standing order. You have operational guidance note on non-cust- as a matter of fact, I have them all here. This is your standing order on non-custodial, this is training. On non-custodial and custodial training curriculum. This is, I think, this is, um, I I purposely brought this because. This is on non-custodial lecture manual. This is non-custodial trainers guide, so each of these, we would like to know the level of utilization. If it is not being used, you let us know and why. If there's a problem with the contact, what you just say, if or what you require to make it to be used. If it is used, you let us, if it is not, we want to know to what degree it is used or to to what degree it is not used. Then I go to the next question, sir. It's about these seven hundred and seventy-four local governments. You said some gov-states provide facility for you, please, if it's possible to let us know which states because it's good to commend them. And anywhere you have gotten support, you know, the states are in terms of support, so that we know. Um, we, this local, local governments where you have presence, I know that it's not in other places. I know that, for example, in Platu state, all the local government in Platu state, there are correction, but desk officers are non-custodial, but it's not so for everywhere. Let's know where you have them, let's know where you don't have them. Um, in some courts you have some, but in there in some places you don't have any. So again, to be able to understand. Um, and for the officers, because in terms of supervision of non-custodial. It is important that the different types, the the, it kind of is almost different, so. If it's those supervising community service, maybe the question will be, do you have a way of um designating your staff? To supervise community service or to the those who are supervising parole? And now speaking on parole, I will, you you inaugurated a parole board. I think as far back as twenty twenty-two or so. Please, can you let us know how much you have budgeted in terms of implementation of this? Or if you have not, let us know. Um, let us also know the locations where you have offices for the parole board. We know that in some states in their headquarters, you have designated the space for them. So let's know where the this is happening and where this is not happening, because some of them say they don't have. Obviously, but we know that some do have, so that it'd be good to know. Now, you mentioned that you are using vigilantes, I was a little bit worried. So these vigilantes, do you do training for them ahead? And um, I think, I don't know whether it's in your standing order, I may be wrong there, but there. Is it possible that some of your retired personnel, because sometimes people retire and they are still strong? That you could call for volunteers?
Uh staffing, the uh the suggestions around the staffing, because one of the things we hear from the field. Is that after training non-custodial officers, they are posted, because you don't have enough, then you move them back to custodia. And then these other places are back and and sometimes you bring people to non-custodial who have not been part of the training. Is there any plan to address this challenge? Okay, so um you can note this if you want to, you can respond now before I call the those who are on the speakers list. Please respond to the ones who respond verbally, and then please, we will also appreciate written submissions on this. You can bring some of them tomorrow, especially the things about budgets and how the bills are done. But the ones who can speak to us now, the ones who will speak, inform us later, no problem, thank you, sir.
Okay, um, on the issue of probation desk officers, yes, uh we assign. Non-custodial officers to the various parts. And sometimes they have dual responsibilities. And one of which is you, you set some of them are probation officers and then you.
The question is, the list, those who are the court. It's not just.
Okay, the list to the court.
You know, for the court to award probation, you must put a name in the in the decision. You must say, this person should be here on probation, remember? Probation means you are not going to court, but the court have seen that they are, some reasons why you committed that offence. So they give you conditions that you will meet, those conditions are supposed to reduce the risk. So maybe, maybe the fight you are taking in there, they say go and go and do rehabilitation of drugs. Or you don't have skill, they say go and learn skill, or you have anger management problem, they say go for anger management course. So somebody needs to supervise you when you go and do those things, please let me stress. It does not mean that it's the correctional officer that will need to deliver those expertise, no. You deal with those who are professionals in there.
But you supervise, that's why I told you don't need to be the ones having all the skills. But what I'm asking, do you have that list given to the court? Because if you don't give the court, these are the list of those who are designated as probation officer. And these are their agenda, their age and all that, it would be difficult for the court to match them. So that's the question I'm just asking, not about the court desk officers or non-custodial.
Oh, for now, we don't have that list presented to the courts, I will take care of that really, thank you. Uh the use, on the use of vigilante, yes, um, we give them local training and then on the orders given by the court. Because we know if an offender is placed on a community service. He's supposed to serve not more than three hours, we try to educate them on what they need to do on site because. Uh, we don't have enough staff to cover and for us to then go to court and say, no. This person that has been sentenced on community service, we don't have staff, that would, that would not be too good for us. And that's why we use vigilante and we indeed train them on what to do while on the field with the offender. But where we have adequate staff, our staff are trained on the field and um. Most, most of these other things, facilities, yeah, the, the, the local government provides some facilities for us. And um, you know, most times just office, office spaces without those uh office. Without those office uh uh equipment. So and when you ask them, they will tell that that's what, that's the best they could do. And then on the issue of training, yes, as soon as we, we thank God for power, they have helped us to train a lot of our staff. And some of these staff, sometimes they are deployed back to correctional, you know, to custodial centers. Also because there are no adequate staff in the correctional centers. And then if any person comes before another training embark upon by power. That we encourage local trainings by, you know, the, uh, you know, by the virus in charge, non-custodial services in the viral states. So we do tell them that, please, uh, as soon as a new staff is deployed to your unit. Ensure that you give them at least some minimal training to be able to handle whatever sentencing, uh sentences that will come up there from. So uh, I think you are, you are, suggestion on the usage of retired staff is quite germane. I think we will think about that because that will help us, a lot of staff, like you said. Uh, are still very strong and though retired, I think we will talk about that, but the other aspect, of course. Um, sometimes you need to, even through appreciation to some of these people. And sometimes the way with that, we hope, we hope to start something and eventually we see how it goes. On the issue of budgeting, um, well, I was, I was just being afraid to say there was no budgetary. Uh, provision, that was why I was a little bit kind to say death, no, you know. So that's, that's the answer I can provide at this level sincerely. I was just being kind, yes, yes, so that nobody, yeah, that's it. I think for now, that's the response, some other ones will make it available to you, sir.
The statistics on those things, um, the, the, even. The local governments, we, what we, we really need facts, you know, which look, I know, for example, in Quara state, there's been quite a lot of support. Quara furnished, I don't know, but I suspect there's quite a lot of the furniture, I don't know. But if we can know, state by state, local government, it's, it would be helpful. Um, there are different ways that we can do to sustain this process, and that's why there was also a question. About how have you mainstreamed all of this training into your training institutions? You know, because if you have not done that, what is that process, more so now that you are doing some more work around curriculum? So let's see what can be done to ensure, because we really feel that this is something that can save governments money. So let me, um, we'll come back to some of these issues and take them one by one as we are concluding when we get there. But I was asking if we could call for some of the submissions. Is United Action Against Corruption and Injustice International here? Yes, are they here? They are not here, they, they've listed to speak. I I know Prava also wanted to, want to speak, but I feel that this other person is. United Action Against Corruption, they're not here. I had wanted to step down UNICEF so that the chair would be here when UNICEF speaks. You can go, okay, let's, let's hear UNICEF present, after UNICEF you can hear Prava then. But if, please let me know when this United Action Against Corruption and Injustice International is around. Okay, please join me to welcome, uh, you can, on this podium, please. It just came in, okay, I, UNICEF will speak first.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Um, I just take this opportunity to really recognize. Our able chairperson, who is not on seat at the moment, of course, the secretary and all members of the panel. On the alleged corruption, abuse of power, torture, cruel, inhumane, degraded. Degraded in treatments against the Nigerian Correctional Service. Um, when this all started, I was really taken aback. I said, will the government really push for this? Uh, so I was then with the honorable minister and then he said, look. See, see, whatever we need to do, we'll get this done, I said, wow. And it really came to pass. This is, I think, the third sitting we are now having, and I just want to really thank the honorable minister. For his bold. Uh, actions being taken in terms of seeing whatever we really need to do. I quite believe it is not a matter in terms of castigating individuals, but how best can we really improve the system as part of the Renew Europe Initiative? To make sure that everybody counts and every Nigerian will really benefit. On the fundamental rights and freedoms that they really have. As enshrined within, both in the constitution as well as other laws. Uh, which those individuals are supposed to be perceived as true Nigerians in the, in, in, within the federation. So basically, the submission we are making, which of course, I will now take. The opportunity to really present our memo to the secretary concerning the UNICEF, it's in there, it's a very short one. Because I know there are so many submissions that have been brought to to bear. But obviously, we are talking about. Situating children within the calculus of correctional service. And this is quite important. Um, first, I would like to start off by saying that the treatment of individuals in custody. Is widely recognized as a litmus test for the integrity of any justice system, especially the treatment of children. As Nancy Mandela aptly stated. There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats its children. We've been looking at this very vividly and I'm very happy that um. This particular event has been scheduled. Um, the principle. Underpins international humanitarian. Uh, sorry, international human rights law and informed global consensus on juvenile justice. Which Nigeria has ratified and domesticated, both in the Child Rights Act. And then if you look in terms of, and we are, we are very, very pleased to see that. The Child Rights Act have been domesticated throughout the federation, it is not just within the federal. Uh, CRA, which was in two thousand and three, but in all states in Nigeria. So the memorandum that I have just submitted to the independent investigative panel to highlight systemic concerns. Regarding the detention of children within the Nigerian Correctional Service using the field mission. Like, for instance, our test case here, which is, I basically would say, our case law is basically that when we went to Quara. In terms of the Boston Institution there, which of course is being managed by the Nigerian Correctional Service. In Ilorin, as a case, that was in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, so it draws on other field evidence and programmatic findings from UNICEF and partners, I'm basically talking here by government. Uh, in implementing some of the issues with regards to the justice, regarding the Correctional Service Act. Under international and domestic legal frameworks, including the Convention on the Rights of the Child, but specifically. If we draw a leaf from section two hundred and twelve of the Child Rights Act and corresponding state-level legislation. The detention of children of children is strictly limited to a measure of last resort. And must be for the shortest possible duration, this is what has been, uh, should be upheld. But I would not really like to deliberate too much and I would really go straight to some of the key elements when you look at the detention of children. I would be, I'll be, I'll be drawing two inferences here. One was the national study we did, thanks to Prava. For taking up that very difficult assignment, but we brought. In all the relevant government entities, most of them are present here. We are reading in twenty twenty-four, there was a national, there is a national report on children and young people in detention. It reveals the alarming trends and underscores the urgency of reform. Of this particular process, more especially on the, on the detention of children. Over a five-year period. We had one hundred and thirty-three thousand, remember this figures? One hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and six children and young people. Age twenty-one and under were held in detention facilities across Nigeria. This is quite a huge and significant number, one hundred and thirty-three thousand within a five-year duration. Seventy-four percent of them were held in pre-trial detention, often for extended period without adjudication. They were being held. Sixty-eight percent of them lack access to legal orientation or representation, undermining their rights to a fair process. We are reading forty-eight percent were detained for non-violent offenses. Raising serious questions about proportionality and necessity. With regards to the detention of those particular cases. So a significant number of children were detained in adult correctional facilities in direct violation of both domestic and international standards. And this is where I really want to divve my heart and thank the Ministry of Interior. We are in, once that report came in, the swift action was being taken and making sure there is the clear distinction. With regards to the detention of children, and of course, with the work that we did with the Nigerian Correctional Service. I said, thank you, because that report led to action, because it was not just in terms of sitting on the findings. But it really propelled us to make sure that the right things are done. But I would like to draw a very good reference here concerning the field monitoring to Ilorin, uh, Boston Institution. Uh, this was in November of twenty twenty-one, which I previously mentioned. Uh, this was in November of two thousand and twenty-one, which I previously mentioned. We had during COVID, how can we really make sure the congestion happens? There was a statutory is, uh, uh, structure, that is the Presidential Committee on Pardons, which with the Ministry of Justice at the time, we were able to really go in into Bostal Institutions, because we also wanted to make sure children who should not be there should not really be kept. But the situation of this Bostal is a training institution, to underline. It didn't comply with the minimum standard, standards set by international law or even within national legislation for the treatment of children in conflict with the law and deprived of liberty. The institution did not comply with those requirements when you look in terms of age established in the Bostal Institutions and the Remand Centers Act of nineteen sixty-two. If you look in terms of Part Two, Section A and subsection A B of that particular act, the key information in terms of the interviews and files that were kept by the institution revealed that very young children, even below the minimum eligibility age of fourteen years, were admitted. And those children were incarcerated with adults as, as old as forty-three years. We saw in those institutions, even those who had given birth to children of the same age they were inside those institutions. So it was not like having one or ten, there were about two hundred and twelve of them in that same institution. And now during that assignment, also the files which we were able to really lay hands on, sorry, it was two hundred and twenty-three children, these were unlawfully detained, deprived of liberty without lawful warrants, okay? On, or held on grounds of non-existent criminal offenses. It was quite, uh, interesting. The warrants that we are coming in were falsified by a magistrate who sits in Niger State. And the majority of them, we are really coming through that particular channel and then providing them to this institution. And then we found out that when we did further investigation, in terms of even that magistrate, the magistrate was not even existing. So with those interviews which we conducted with the children and the adults, consistently indicated that they did not appear in front of a court or being held accompanied by a lawyer or a legal aid provider. So the institution was in no condition to house the two hundred and twenty-three children and young adults together, living, and when you look at the safety conditions, did not meet the minimum standards. When you look at the provision of water, food, clothing, these were grossly in, in, insufficient. So no provisions have been made to maintain physical and mental health conditions of the detainees at the time. And there was no visible ongoing activity to support children's learning, their rehabilitation and reintegration. The assessment from the children and the adults faced twenty-four-hour long stay in their overcrowded and non-sanitary cells without access to education, vocational training services, exercise, recreation or leisure activities. Because we, we are able to really do a deep dive in terms of those investigations. But I really like to thank the Federal Ministry of Justice. And the Chair of the Committee at the time, that was a justice, former Justice Bello of FCT. He really took it upon himself, despite all the difficulties, to say that the detention of children should really be used as a measure of last resort. And all of those who did not really have warrants at the time and ever that they've been detained within that Bostal Institution, they were all released. And we did not stop upon their release. What happens next is how do we really facilitate their safety back to locations of origin, contacting their families and providing the necessary support for their social and economic reintegration? And we are in, we worked very closely with the Bostal Institution authorities at the time, the state entity, I'm talking specifically with regards to the Ministry of Women Affairs, Justice, Education and even, uh, the, uh, Ministry of Local Government, to see what best we could really do. And I'm very pleased to say that the majority of them who were within the vicinity, over one hundred and fifty, we were able to really make sure they have a second chance in life by ensuring that they have access to skills for decent work, those who should, those who really aspire to go back to school, because the majority of them were really learning, yearning for learning and they're going back to, uh, to normal education. So children, including those in conflict with the law, they have the right to the highest attainable standards of physical and mental health. This requires age-sensitive treatment that supports their reintegration and constructive participation in society. That should be upheld. Detaining children for non-violent offenses or due to the absence of alternative measures constitute a violation of children's rights and such practices are incompatible, both with national as well as international, uh, national and international standards. But what is important here and drawing lessons from the Quara, it was not just the only institution. At that point, I think we made four visits to four different institutions. Two, one was in Lagos, the other, uh, was in Ogun State. And then we were then supposed to go to Kaduna at the time. But because of the insecurity and the measures moving up and down because of the road measures, that was aborted. But then that responsibility, I think we did that in camera, uh, in terms of the reviews that were made at the, at that particular point in time. So we would like to really provide some remedies or recommendations for consideration. One is legislative reform. We have been yearning waiting for the Children and Young Adults Correctional Institution bill. This was supposed to really repel and replace the Bostal Institution Act, which was way back in nineteen sixty-two, so that we'll be able to really make sure that the fundamental rights and freedoms of children in consideration in terms of the minimum criminal age of responsibility should really be upgraded. Because there are two provisions when you look in terms of the Criminal Justice Act, more especially concerning children and juvenile justice, I think the age is even at seven. And this is where we quite believe that some shots, uh, it requires attention and action. Um, invest in improving the administration of child justice standards, including legal aid. And we, I'm talking specifically with regards to UNICEF and the institutions with regards to the provision of legal aid. Let's really see what best we could do, because this will really help in terms of the review of the various dossier of every child. And this also leads credence in terms of our records. Because once the child gets in to the criminal justice system or even into the justice system, we should be able to track that child from the onset until exit. But some of these children even stayed, even if the offenses that were charged against them were true, they've even overstayed in those institutions, which of course should not really be the case. The third, and which of course I'm very happy to really be part of this presentation today, which was made by, uh, our friends from the Nigerian Correctional Service, is the issue with regards to non-custodial measure. And I would practically say on the part of UNICEF, we really work very closely with, with the authorities concerned. Because when I look in terms of the four components that were enlisted and then you look at, for instance, on the issue of provisional services. We are in, provisional work should really be an integrated part with regards to the non-custodial measures. But then you look at the deficits that were enumerated, let's really turn the page around. And we are very pleased to say that we'll further engage after this and then we'll work closely also with the Ministry of Interior. And I'm very happy that our dear sister is here, who is our focal point within the ministry, to see how we could do that. So be ready. Um, the fourth point that we'd like to talk about is the coordination among the MDAs. And more especially when you look with regards to the Ministry of Justice, the Nigerian Police, the Nigerian Correctional Service, including the judiciary. Now, the pleasing fact of the matter is that the issue for non-custodial measures is basically part of the Nigerian Correctional Service Act. And this is where we quite see so fascinating, we are in the burden, rather than overcrowding that particular task within the courts, is transferred to the Nigerian Correctional Service. Let's really make best use of that service and then making sure that when you look in terms of the investments, in terms of overstays, will really be something which is a necessary practice. The fifth is, um, and this is basically in terms of strengthen the institutional and technical capacities of those who are really within the correctional service and integrating a comprehensive child justice module into the curriculum of all correctional training institutions. UNICEF is there, will be able to really also work alongside with you to really make sure this really is a constituent. It's just like what we currently doing also with the place, to see that within the correctional training institutions, we have that particular module and we have the expertise in terms of even around the table. I'm not looking at you. Um, the modernization of data systems for juvenile. Because if we really have a tracking system, and this is where the issues of accountability comes in, by knowing who is in the system, when you are in and when you should be out, it will really help us. And UNICEF is pleased to say we'll work also with the government and the necessary stakeholders to see that that data system, because we have one for all cases of children. Why not, can't we just extend in terms of having an instance, in terms of our child protection information management system, extended throughout the time when a child comes in contact with the justice system? We should be able to work on this. The seventh, I will say, is supervision and oversight. Because what happened in the, in the Quara Bostal Institution is a clear manifestation with regards to a slackness with regards to supervision and oversight. How can we be having two hundred and twenty-three individuals wearing their records? Taking into account, we are in, they should not even be there, but they are there. So it's, it's an issue with regards to supervision and oversight. And, um, we also have to improve our disposition and service delivery. Because the crowded conditions under which, when you look in terms of what should be the structured recreational, educational and vocational programs to be tailored on the developmental needs of those particular cases of children, we are, we are absent. So basically, the guarantees in terms of access to quality nutrition, health and mental health services and with a focus on trauma-informed care and psychosocial support to promote holistic rehabilitation and reintegration is very, very vital and quite important. And the second to last is to really enforce actions on age falsification, on lawful admission of children into adult facilities. This we should really be able to address, but all of the critical elements contained there in, in terms of actual work that should be, what should be done is contained with regards to the memorandum that I've just shared with the panel. And then last but not the least is for us to really establish standards to prevent the detention of children below age fourteen. Uh, we are really looking in terms of the age of criminal responsibility. If that is being upheld and that could be integrated as part of the, 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 um, the current act that is under review, then obviously I think that would really help us. To close, UNICEF remains steadfast in its commitment to supporting the government of Nigeria in advancing a child justice system that supports the rights of, the rights and dignity of every child. And I want to also thank the government of Nigeria, especially the Federal Ministry of Justice. We have a specific component, when you look in terms of the, uh, the justice reform document. I think we are, the national justice policy. We are there, I think, on a component number six, whereby a dedicated chapter was really dedicated with regards to children. And that was really kudos to the government. So this include promoting diversion from formal judicial processes. I think it has already been elaborated and strengthen the non-custodial measures and facilitating community-based reintegration for children in conflict with the law. Um, through collaborative partnership and sustained technical assistance, UNICEF will continue to champion reforms, to support the reforms which have been championed by government that ensures justice systems, a child-sensitive rehabilitation and reintegration are aligned with international standards. I thank you, and that submission was also, was already made on behalf of UNICEF, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. We've taken note of your elaborate ten recommend, point, recommendations and the panel will look at it, study it, reflect it and then see how we move with it. There are two more that I have on the speaker's note. And after that, uh, we will give the correctional service opportunity to respond. Um, if there is further comments you want to make. One is by United Action Against Corruption and Injustice International. Um, I, I don't see the, your presentation here, but if, if you are in the room, you can quickly come in and speak to that. And after that, we will have Prowa come in, I think Abu Gombo can come in and present. Do we have United Action Against Corruption and Injustice, not here? Is a person here? Please, can you come, sir?
Greetings to everyone here. Before I start, I thought, Madam Secretary, I was expected to make this presentation yesterday and there are some little corrections I made, but all the same, let me go straight to what I intended or intended to, to, to present. The strategies for assessment and tracking of performance in the correctional center. What we try to make it understandable here is that all that we are doing here is very, very important. Some of the presentations of the, of the, of the observation, including the, the, on, on the spot assessment made by the committees to the various, um, centers are something that are new, that are not new within the society, within the correctional, uh, services and even some of the, many of the NGOs. At the end of it, we want to achieve something. And I can refer us to, I want to refer us to the, one very important statement made by the Chair of this panel, Madam Secretary, which said, integrity matters. In the first, there were a lot of, um, panel and other, uh, uh, initiative to make some corrections, which at the end of the day, the reports end off in shelves, not implemented. And at the same time, I believe that whatever happens here from the starting of this panel, um, work up to the end and submission of the report, what we want to achieve is implementation of those recommendations by the panel. In that, we need to, you know, apply integrity. At the same time, because we can, we should, we should At the same time, because we can, we should, we should tell ourselves the truth in this country. Our, the name of our organization, United Action Against Corruption and Injustice, we have gone far to assess some, assess, to make some assessment with regards to injustice and corruption going on. You know, in between or within the government cycle and other organization. We are expected not to, we have, Nigeria is expected to attain the maturity and the position of um a country that can compete with many developed or international uh uh countries. We are secondary to some of this, like United Nations um um issue on correctional services. Second issue, but why is it over the years? We keep on repeating, going back to square one, you know, spend the money. You find out that what we are saying, everybody knows this. So what I'm trying to say is that this panel
Will it be possible to, you know, speak to here? No, 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 not necessarily read, just because the other things you are saying is not in your paper. Will you update it?
Okay, let me just read.
Yes, it's, yes, so so that, and then if possible, let in the pan, just coming. If just to guide, if you can guide the panel, know what you are recommending. So what for us to do, because that's what will help us. You know, um I like the point about integrity, but I was looking at it and I was asking DJS whether there was something about integrity in his own paper, but not in my own paper.
Okay, fine, it's just, um, it's all right. What we have here is that with regards to assessment of or tracking performance in the correctional center, there are things that need to be to be um considered. One, we should have centralized performance monitoring system, which will include digital platform for inmate management and performance tracking. And real data collection and and uh analysis. Then very important inter-agency data sharing with digital sharing, the police to reduce uh some of these bottlenecks. Then periodic audits. Internal audit by the Nigerian Correctional Services in in um offices. Then external, we need to have an external audit by independent bodies, easy, the NGOs, the National Human Rights Commission. This external audit is key. Because what is there if we don't have an outsider telling us or auditing all the performance by the agencies and offices, I think we're missing it. We will not get the accurate um uh um information that we need. Then we should develop a scorecard that is like by facilitating uh facility level uh scorecards aligned with key performance indicators. Then benchmarking against high performing centers nationally and internationally. Staff appraisal system, regular performance reviews based on conduct, training and image feedback. Then integration with promotion incentives and disciplinary measures. Imits stakeholders survey. Um qualitative insight into program effectiveness and management is key. When it comes to rehabilitation outcome and tracking. Um tracking reintegration successes, employment and identifying gaps in adherent support is is another thing that we need to look at. Then how do we, after all this, and how do uh rehabilitate outcomes tracking? We need technology deployment, biometric tracking for inmates and staff, TCTV incident. Then, but in all these assets, what are the challenges pieces in performance assessment? This include data reliability issue. Inconsistent or manipulated records are always there. Someone says something, we go, you see other thing. Then funding constraint. This, this apart from if some of these things, if not of the intervention of some international donors, things cannot be achieved. So we should look at the funding constraint and do something. The recommendation we have we should enact policies, mandating annual performance reports for all correctional facilities. Even though we know that in the the new act, the act have done great or have made provision for great things to happen in terms of um improvement. But there is a need to enact this uh uh mandating annual performance. Then another recommendation, the need for strengthening partnership with civil society, academia, particularly people in academia are very, very key. That's why, for instance, INEC when it comes to um national um election, academia in both, academia are key in this, they should be uh considered. And international bodies already they are doing that for independent evaluations. These are, then another recommendation there is a need to introduce legislation for digital record keeping and performance. Someone, it's hard for someone here to just click and find details of certain things, so there are need for that um digital uh data. Then allocate targeted funding for modern monitoring technologies, even the monitoring, the tracking that's a need to allocate some funds so that it can be sustainable. Institutionization uh in condition, train, uh training for correctional staff is very, very key. We believe some of the senior staff in the correctional centers are well-trained, they have all the expertise and so on. But the junior ones, who do the day-to-day uh work? I think they are liking, that's why we say training is very, very key. In conclusion, a robust, we believe, a robust performance assessment framework anchor in clear key performance indicators. And the kind of technological innovation, independent oversight and capacity building can transform Nigerian Correctional Center into true hubs for rehabilitation. Thank you very much.
He has made some very, very important uh contributions. But you see, um this, as he said, it was supposed to be for yesterday. So if you looked at your yesterday agenda, you will notice the last session for yesterday was supposed to be looking at strategies for assessing and tracking performance and impact of rehabilitation and reintegration programs. So all that he said, they're very relevant. So we would use that to, when we are dealing with that section today with. We're going to very quickly listen to Prowa's submission, which is the last, but please, Habu Gambo, you can come up here now, but you need to really be brief. We have received your submission. Once he finishes correctional service, please, it would be good to respond to the UNICEF uh comment and if they want to respond to any others so that and as soon as we do that, we'll just be thinking about leaving, you know, we're likely going to close a little bit earlier today. Except somebody else have any other additional information to give, but I want to plead with you. If there are some other issues you want to bring to the attention of the panel. You see the panel email address, it's it's on all, most all of the uh uh notices and on the banners. Please do collect it or ask for the um from the from the secretary. But if you have any questions, you want to ask the correctional service or you want the panel to be aware of or that for the panel to ask the correctional service, bring it to our attention, you can submit that to the to the um secretary. Today is the last part of the public hearing. We will still continue tomorrow, but tomorrow is a closed session, only for those who are specifically invited to that session. Okay, Habu Gambo, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much, um. Good afternoon, distinguished members of the panel. All protocols duly and respectfully observed. Um I'm here to speak to you on a snapshot of field experience by uh Prowa around the implementation of non-custodial uh solutions or measures or sanctions. Um. I would like to, let me start with the context. Probably the uh the figures are in the public domain. Uh as at fourth August this month, uh overall total inmate population is around eighty-one thousand four hundred and six with about seventy-nine, four sixty-three males and about one thousand nine forty-three females. And ATP awaiting trials constitute about sixty-five point two percent. I'm sure you agree with me. Uh, there is implication to this. And there are one or few of the implications that is around most facilities are overcrowded. Basic facility overstretched, maximum capacity exceeded and human condition is something else. So let me leave that to the House. Uh based on this, Prowa has over thirty years' experience in the field uh working with the justice sector actors. And recently, we had a funded project specifically for advancing the implementation of non-custodial uh solu- uh solutions or sanctions across eight priority or seven priority states plus FCT. The state are Edo, Lagos, Abia, Platu, Adamawa, Kano, Anambra and the FCT. Uh the project was launched somewhere around mid-October last year. And the design of the project is tailored to operationalize the provisions of the Nigerian Correctional Service Acts, which mandated the use of alternative to imprisonment such as probation, parole, community service, restorative justice and the rest. And I think the critical outcome we are hoping to see in the implementation of that project uh is around please, uh custodial centers decongestion, safeguard of human rights in our correctional centers, promoting effective rehabilitation aligned with the national and international standards. So this is part of what we hope to see uh at the uh critical outcomes for this project. Uh the objectives, uh let me mention but a few, considering the time constraint. We're looking to strengthen the justice system capacity to implement non-custodial uh majors. To also enhance public safety through offender rehabilitation and reintegration. To ensure compliance with human rights obligations while reducing uh overcrowding in our correctional centers. To also foster restorative justice through community engagement. Um, we explored several approaches to achieving this, considering uh it's an emerging issue. And obviously, we are careful considering our operational context and the terrain itself. Uh we adopted a five-front approach. One, specialized training for judges and magistrates on risk assessment and sentencing guidelines on non-custodial sanctions. Uh second approach around targeted training for correctional officers under the non-custodial directorates on non-custodial sanctions, monitoring and supervision of offenders. Uh the third approach, also, uh we conducted targeted engagement with policymakers, civil society organizations and communities to promote acceptance of these uh majors. The fourth approach is also uh developed standard operating procedures. Case monitoring templates, a reporting system for better tracking and documentation. Uh program assistants were sent to the field to track data and work with the non-custodial officers selected across our focal uh state. Remember, I men- I mentioned, we have about seven priority states plus FCT. And then uh the last one, collaborative effort with donor partners such as International Idea, who is also funding these uh projects. Mark Atto Foundation, OSEA, UN O- uh UN ODC and civil society of uh organizations. Uh few, uh just to share but few, like I said, uh so far, we started October last year and um we're about ten to eleven months. Uh but just to share but few achievements so far, we've trained over six hundred and fifty correctional officers on non-custodial uh sanctions in seven priority state and the FCT. We've also trained thirty judges and magistrates on non-custodial sanctions in a do state. Remember, I said one of the approach is for us to provide specialized training for magistrate and judges. We started in a door. Uh just for, I'm sure we are all aware, they are currently on the annual uh holiday. As soon as they return, we'll continue with the other uh priority states. Then we've also reactivated and trained seventy, over seventy-five parole board members across this priority state that I mentioned. And the boards, the parole board members uh uh currently have recorded various sitting, identify inmates eligible for parole. And they are already planning to conduct public, uh no, sorry, uh conduct hearings. You know, part of the process, after identifying them, then they need to also organize hearings where all the major stakeholders will be available for uh usually looking at the criteria for uh granting parole to inmates. Then um another achievement. Then um another achievement is around improved data collection and human impact reporting on non-custodial sanctions in seven priority state and the FCT. Again, uh we've seen over time growing acceptance among justice sector actors uh reflected in the increases of non-custodial sanctions across their locations. Uh when we started in this state, you realize that the figures, the baseline was, the baseline figures was really pretty low in terms of uh the use of non-custodial sanctions. But within the last ten months, the figures is really encouraging, especially in the eight priority states. Uh this will be attributed to a lot of engagements, physical trainings, virtual trainings, both for the NCO staff, CSO's and the justice, uh the justices and then the magistrates. So um we hope to see more uh utilization of uh non-custodial sanctions in our courts.
Because of time, can you quickly just run up on your challenges and lessons and then the specific recommendations you would like us to make?
Okay.
So maybe one and a half, two minutes.
Okay. So change uh uh some few, uh just few challenges, um just to mention but few. Uh resistance from traditional justice actors who fear ball incarceration, infrastr- infrastructure gaps, especially at the grassroots level, uh that limit implementation of non-custodial sanctions. Me- uh misconceptions around non-custodial sentencing being too lenient. That's what uh some of the challenges uh we've seen. And then inadequate funding to non-custodial uh directory is another key challenge. So lesson learned, uh continuous training and advocacy can change the this mindset. And then multi-agency coordination is vital to reduce system delays as well as community outreach is non-negotiable for lasting uh reforms. Uh recommendations. Uh one, we are recommending that a scale of on non-custodian framework across all states, not just the six, uh seven priority states that we are currently intervening, but across all the six states of the country, uh is good those frameworks are also replicated. Then secondly, we are recommending allocation of funding for training, supervision and then rehabilitative services. And then thirdly, we are also recommending integrated, holistic, to integrate holistic reintegration programs, like the vocationals, educational and then mental health supports, that I'm sure this forum will have um um discussed earlier. Then fourthly, we are also recommending enhanced monitoring system to track outcomes and then uh reoffending uh from those inmates. And then the fifth one, we are also recommending an upgrade to the existing infrastructure and also designate uh designate facilities for non-custodial programming, especially uh in the underserved states. Uh so our closing remarks, in conclusion, the implementation of non-custodian majors is not only a legal requirement. It is a cost-effective, humane and sustainable approach to justice that protects rights, reduces reoffending and then strengthens public safety. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you very much. Um it will be also good that some of the things you made reference to, if you can submit it uh to the, like the samples, template and all of that, sub- submit to the um panel, that would be appreciated. Thank you very much. Uh thank you, Habu Agombo. Um I would like to invite the correctional service for your response to the UNICEF presentation and the other last uh presentation, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I want to place it on record that the CGC is happy with the intervention of the panel and members of the public. Nigerian Correctional Service is a public institution. It is owned by the public and their contributions are very for its group. So we appreciate what is going on. However, the, the, the issue of Yiling in twenty twenty one, uh I was in the picture of what happened. And even day before yesterday, I mentioned that the retired Chief Judge of FCT, Justice, Justice Bello Ishak.
Okay, plead. I've just been informed that my lord, Honorable Justice Candide Johnson, who is the Parole Board Chair of Lagos State is online to address the panel. So, but I think you can respond to, to, to the UNICEF before my lord.
Okay, okay, okay. So we, we actually appreciated what happened at that point in time. The CGC took, the administration, the authority took decisions on what happened. Uh and the place was actually, decisions were taken on the, on the, on the outcome of the visit. And the, the, the number of inmates were reduced tremendously. But I want to put it in record that those people that were seen at the uh institution were not criminals. They were not there because they committed offenses against the state. They were there because their parents, their parents or guardians had issues with them because of transi-, uh drug abuse and some other things. And they were the one that took steps to contact courts to put them in their place. They were neither awaiting trials or convicted inmates. So they were there, we don't even refer to them as inmates, we refer to them as students. So the, we, we quite accept that some of our staff may have played the rules, especially when they are, they didn't find out the true age of the people, they rely on warrants and whether the warrants on itself were defective. We truly appreciate the part that was played that has been laid to rest. And unfortunately, of recent again, the panel went there and they found out that some underage, or some uh overage people were found. We were not, oh plus underage, we were not happy about it. Fortunately for us too, throughout the first day, the CGC was listening to all the things that were going on here. Before we got back to the office, he has sent messages across, sent delegations across to these places to make sure that the writing is being done. Uh uh I think the panel and the general public will agree with me that issues of administration, the standards are there. But there are always deviance. And that is why the authority is there to be making corrections at uh as it goes. I also put it on record two days ago that the initial plan of that building, the infrastructure, was not built for, as, as, as a booster institution, that it was later converted. And because of that conversion, some of the things that are actually needed in a standard booster uh are ongoing, the provision of those things are still ongoing. The learning cause uh uh poster is a new institution among the three functioning ones. So by God's grace, we try our best to, 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 to take care of it and to be on the lookout for such things before it gets worse than it is. Having said that, the, in the issue, the, I want to also draw the attention of uh uh the public to the fact that uh unless we, we accept that the custodian services are social services. If we put issue of government expenditure first on custodian services, then the, the, we, we miss a lot. Because right from primary school, we were taught that there are some institutions of government that are actually meant to provide social services. They are not meant to bring in resources or revenue. For example, issues of provision of water, education and some others. So corrections should be considered alongside this. Like the issue of this recurrent eighty seventy-nine, that is the standard population of the whole number of inmates in Nigerian Correctional Service, including those that are in the boosters that are not convicted or awaiting trial. If you, if we, it's better to do comparison sometimes. For example, from the beginning of this year, the numbers have been hovering around that figure. But from the internet, I have seen that in America, for example, excuse me, but please, let me put it on record. So that we know where, whether we actually have congestion in Nigeria or, or bank congestion. Because we have always, from our point of view in the corrections, what we have in Nigeria is not congestion, but urban congestion. When you go to Ibadah, you go to Lagos, you go to Quara, you come to FCT, the prisons in the cities, they are congested. Let you go to the interland, you go to Kefi New, you see that the prisoners are limited. The beds are there, nobody is occupying there. If you go to Jalingo, if you go to Sertibarua, there are many places you go. So, some places there is nobody.
You need more customers.
No, what I'm saying is that I want to disabuse the mind of both the panel and the public that the congestion is not real, it's not all over the country. It is in selected custodial center. And it is because of this huge number of uh awaiting trial. If the judiciary can do justice by making sure these cases are fast-tracked and they are done on time, we, we can take these people to our farms. We have eighteen farm centers and many other every project. We can transfer them to those places, we can take them to the prisons in the interland and the number will be balanced. So as it is today, it is not about congestion, it's about urban congestion in the city centers. We have, we, the, our population in Nigeria is about two hundred million plus. In America, it's over three hundred million plus. In America, the federal, the federal prisons alone, they have one hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven. No, all the inmates for the federal. So it's like it doubles our own. But the total population of inmates in American prisons, as we speak, at the beginning of the year, is about one point eight million. So our own. Yes, our own is eighty-one thousand. So it's a social service, government should help us to make provision for these people. Judiciary should be encouraged to make sure the cases are fast-tracked so that everybody will not be talking about congestion, congestion, congestion. We can take these people to our farms, we can take them to other places where they will be more useful. So that is what I want to say. And the other presenter too, I want to, this uh tracking devices. I want to tell him that we have an after-care service that track inmates even after, after they, they must have served their sentence and that the ICT is also there. There are collaborations with other, other uh agencies. For example, the police, we have a very robust collaboration with them as we speak. And the collaboration is working. And some other agencies are approaching, or the NDLA has approached us and we are having good working relationship. The ICT in the corrections, by the virtue of the ministers, the honorable ministers intervention, is working very well. It is improving on daily basis. There, we have e-border now, which take care of the fences of corrections. About ten, ten correctional centers, including the FCT here uh 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 and uh me, uh just and other places. There are cameras, increased surveillance on the walls of the corrections, which makes it difficult for things to be thrown in from outside or from inside to outside. So this is the first phase. The second phase is also has been introduced. And the, the second phase of e-border project is to take care of inmates' needs inside the corrections in things like phone call and others. The minister is working on it and by the time he comes on board, we have many other solutions to our present problem. The CCTV too, most of the problems we have encountered of recent, whether in terms of uh disturbances in our corrections, in most cases, the latest ones have always been captured in our CCTV so that we can get better solutions. So the, the, that those are the, and in terms of age too, this age issue in corrections, especially underage and uh, and uh, and uh overage. We have been talking about inputting the real age of inmates in the warrants. Not only the year, but the real date amount so that it can help us solve some of this problem. Because in our collaboration with other agencies, if the court writes twenty, you know, if the court writes something like nineteen eighty, for example, all the people that were born in that year, other agencies see it as more or less like a fraud that the corrections is the one inputting age. How can twenty, thirty people or hundred people be born on the same day or something like that, or the same year? So we are urging that the authorities should assist us and compare or encourage the judges to be putting the actual date of birth of these people uh in their warrants. And uh in terms of address too, we have been urging them, but it's very difficult to talk to judicial officers because they will tell you that the forms have been printed. So to print another form is difficult. So even the address, if we have problem to trace address, sometimes they will just see the man is from Katina, the man is from Yiling, the man is from Obomasho. There is no landmark, whether it's near Aqua Church or it's near the market or it's Ajantens or this is number twenty-seven, whatever, whatever. So most of the warrants coming, the date of birth is a very big problem. And the address is also a big problem. Thank you very much. I don't know, my, my colleagues may have one or two to say.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Um I, um thank you very much, the delegation from Correctional Service. And the comment you made, um panelists persuaded to respond on, on, on two issues. The first, in terms of the comparison between Nigeria and the US. The panel would like to state categorically that US is not a model in relation to imprisonment. It's actually seen as one of the, if not the worst country in terms of the number of persons who are in custody and especially blacks, young black male. However, it's in, you point about the urban congestion is correct. There are thirty custodial centers in Nigeria that are causing the problem in terms of the population. And all of these thirty custodial centers are in the urban areas. The statistics in terms of the proportion that are waiting trial is only in respect of the total population, meaning is the average. There are facilities that have worse situations, that their percentage of those that are waiting trial is over ninety percent. Eighty-seven, all of the custodial centers in Lagos, with exception of perhaps Badagri, have population of awaiting trial over eighty-seven percent margin, some over ninety-something. Portacots and the rest of them, oh where a custodial center even before the, what has happened. So you are correct that we need to do something about the urban congestion. And in doing that, because of the fact that the Controller General has the power to move somebody from one custodial facility to another anywhere in the country. Same for the zonal coordinator, same for the state controller. But if they are waiting trial, then they have to go to court, that's where the problem is. However, the panel would like to restate the fact that imprisonment must be as a very last resort. We would have, I mean, one of the states uh laws on corrections, like the one Abia State signed up last week. The farm centers for, put those sentenced to community service. signed up last week, the farm centers, for those sentenced to community service, they can serve it even in the farm center. So the person doesn't need to live in the custodial facility, and you are feeding the person to be able to do that. So the panel completely understand this urban nature and that it is something that we really need to do, because once more of the people are not, are convicted, your correctional service have more flexibility in terms of what you do with them, that's correct. The second point that the panel would like to bring to you, Ben, because you have made a presentation that shows that you're dealing with the borders, dealing with security project, and the panel would like to bring your attention to section twenty-eight of the Nigerian Correctional Service Act, and it of twenty nineteen, and would like to have more details related to how you are implementing it, and I'm going to read this, so maybe by tomorrow as you're coming, please, we need more information on this. Section twenty-eight subsection one says, "There shall be provided monitoring device to protect, control and safeguard correctional activities, including observatory towers, double perimeter walls, closed circle television, body scanners, e-monitoring devices, electrically activated alarm systems and other instruments of restraint." Sub-two, "The correctional service shall establish and maintain a full-equipped armed squad, full-equipped armed squad, intelligence and investigation unit to enhance security, surveillance, monitoring, intelligence gathering and protection." The last, which is subsection three of that section twenty-eight, it said, "In deploying the facilities under subsection one, priority shall be given to the security requirement of maximum security custodial centers." So if it is possible to let us know in terms of your, the information, in terms of this provision, all of the facilities that have met this complaint, especially all your maximum and facilities, and where you have challenge, let us know what that challenge is. You know, as we said the first year, and we are saying again, if a sick person goes to a doctor, if I have headache as a sick person, and I go and tell doctor, I don't have this headache, or in short, it is just my tiny thing about my leg and I'm, I'm okay, it means that the doctor can assist, and the panel really would like to have a more comprehensive response. So if you can give us information around this, we really, really appreciate, I really appreciate it. If it is okay now, I would like us to invite Milord to speak to us now. Milord, Honorable Justice Candida Johnson retired, he is the chairperson of the parole board for Lagos State, and was one of the parole board chairs that was inaugurated on the twenty-fifth of August twenty twenty-two. He was also very, very instrumental in the review drafting and the review of the protocol that relates to the operational guidelines and protocol for parole administration. Milord, please, if you can speak to us now, thank you, Milord.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah, Milord.
Can you, can you hear, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, Milord, we can hear you, Milord.
A very good afternoon to the very distinguished panel and distinguished participants. I am the Honorable Justice Candid Johnson, retired, chairman of the Lagos State Parole Board inaugurated pursuant to the twenty nineteen NCS Act. Let me quickly say congratulations all round on this extremely valuable third public hearing. I have a short comment and then a short, by way of preamble, and then a short question. Now, let me just say quickly that, you know, and there's, there's no harm in emphasis on what might have already been said. The twenty nineteen NCS Act is a historic and remarkable piece of legislation, if only because amongst other things, the profound change in nomenclature from prison service to correctional service, shifting attention away from the prison itself to the prisoner, now the inmate and the offender, and of course, the structural demarcation into custodial and non-custodial, and then of course, the novel introduction of parole administration, as it were, parole boards into the criminal justice system in Nigeria. As we all know, and I think it's been said already, in twenty twenty-two, National Parole Board was inaugurated, having a retired Supreme Court Judge as chairman, and thirty-six state parole boards, including the FCT, and the FCT were also inaugurated, having retired High Court Judges as chairman, all inaugurated pursuant to section forty of the NCS Act. We are also delighted that subsequently the subsidiary legislation pursuant to the twenty nineteen Act, the NCS operational guidelines and protocols for parallel administration in Nigeria, constructing the legal framework, has come into force. Now, I think I should say very quickly that this twenty nineteen legislation is a shining example and a global testament of Nigeria's leadership in twenty-first century international best practices with respect to human rights, good correctional practices, and the reformation, rehabilitation and integration of inmates and offenders. Now, there, there's no better opportunity than this one to celebrate the Ministry of the Interior and the NCS, and to voice the great honor to be of national service and to be formatted and formalized, productively budgeted into the official fabric of the NCS and the Ministry of Interior. As I conclude, let me say that is my humble appeal, that the provision subject to appropriation of a variety of logistics and other operational tools, especially audio recording and transcription equipment, will be of tremendous help to the important work of the parole boards in Nigeria. My question and conclusion. Presently, is there any input or consideration by the NCS in its budgetary preparation and presentation regarding the twenty twenty-six budget in respect of the NCS's establishment needs specifically for the parole boards? In other words, is the parole board factored into the NCS architecture for the twenty twenty-six budget? Thank you very much, I'm grateful for this opportunity. God bless us all.
Thank you, thank you, Milord, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Milord, for speaking out, and thank you very much for your commitment in this. The correctional service team, they are taking note of your question, and we will give them opportunity now to respond to, to your question, Milord. Correctional Service.
I, I will be general. I thank my Lord for the, for the comments and the encouraging encomiants on both the ministry and the service. I want to put it on record that since the twenty nineteen Act, the authorities of Nigerian Correctional Service have been trying to push off, to push out budgets in relation to non-custodial measures generally. Unfortunately, I'm not in position to give figures, but I know they have been trying their best. The man who can give the figures will probably give it to the panel, but I know the authority have been trying to push out figures, and they have not met with much success in the budgeting for non-custodial measures generally. Our hope is that this panel and people like you, my Lord, can intervene so that non-custodial measures can be, including the parole, can be budgeted for adequately to take care of such things, so that our justice system will be better for all of us. Thank you, my Lord.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and we would repeat that same question. So please, that question that Milord asked is possible when you, for tomorrow's session, we would like you to speak to that issue. And just to put on record, both Milord, my Lord, and all of the chairs of the parole board, they've been doing quite a lot, stretching themselves, some have been going to correctional centers, trying to see what they can do. And I want to publicly commend a do state. We were informed that there were some token funds that were released to the parole board of a do state, I think of one million era, for their, for their administration, and we are hoping that this can be introduced, this is by the state, if this can be integrated. There's a whole lot of needs in this direction to make sure that this happens. So, Milord, thank you very much, be rest assured, the panel will follow up with your question tomorrow with the correctional service and see how, what kind of information we'll receive from them. I would, we're now beginning to think of coming to close. I will ask the panel members if they have further questions or comment before I do the summary.
Very much, panel secretary. Mine will not be a question, but just a comment. It's concerning to hear the reports of UNICEF concerning the same, the law ring that we talked about yesterday. I was wondering if UNICEF observed this in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-one, and took such actions, talked about it, and the actions were taken, and we return back in twenty twenty-five, we saw exactly the same thing, no difference, not even one in all the points listed. So it's now becoming to me, it's looking like the, yes, like re-offending the persons that we have released, returning back again to, yes. So I don't think we can build systems that will work that way. If we, the, we, the ministry have invested this level of time, resources to do what we are doing, what was concerning, most concerning to me is now, imagine coming back in the next five years to also begin to report the same exact thing we talked about. So I don't know what the correctional service need to do, so that what we are doing here will not just be that we address the things that are raised now, and then maybe they last for one year, two years, in the next three years, there is no system that keeps that sustained, please. I want to stop here. Thank you.
Sir, this time around.
No, 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 whenever, hold on, hold on, hold on. Whenever any person that is giving responsibility want to talk to me and say, by God's grace, I discountenance that.
Okay, okay.
Even politicians, some they will elect them, they will call for praying and fasting. I am not part of that. You have responsibility to deliver, so there is no special grace you require in this. All it takes is, oh, yes, all it takes is being deliberate about what you want to achieve.
Okay, it, it's noted.
So no God's grace in this, please.
I will pass the information to the CGC. I told you, he has already started working on it.
I know he's not the one in charge when this happened, but we are saying, let's not come back to repeat this process again. What the Ministry of Interior is doing is the way to go about reforms that deliver the expected result sustainably. If it is done in other agencies, trust me, even as some people are thinking, oh, there's a lot of rot in the system, what you're seeing in corrections, if it's done in other agencies, you see worst. But I don't want to talk about it so that you don't go home beating your chest and say, oh, yeah, we are doing better. Other agencies have their issues. If their supervising ministries do what Ministry of Interior is doing with you, believe me, in the next three years, Nigeria will become better than any other, it will be exemplar to any other nation. But the point for us is, the ministry is doing this, let also the service take deliberate action to see that whatever that has been listed or mentioned here, we will not come back even in the next twenty years to talk about it. That's the purpose of this.
Noted, please.
Thank you.
Will not be just noted. The panel will like the Nigerian Correctional Service in its submission tomorrow to please give us a clear submission as to how you will ensure that there will not be a repeat of all of the issues identified in twenty twenty-one as well as twenty twenty-five in Ilorin Custodia, Boster, and all of the Boster institutions. We want to know what system, and there must be a system of accountability, checks and balance, so we need to know what is going to be that system of your internal monitoring mechanism, and by which agency, what just the steps, please do think through. The ones you're already doing, let us know. The ones that is futuristic, that you want to put in place, let us know and give us a timeline when you expect to activate it. And if there are things you require, they may not be, but if assuming there are things you require, let us know, because sometimes it may just be a question of being creative and thinking out of the box. So today, it's Thursday, the fourteenth day of August twenty twenty-five. Today also marks the last session that is open to the public during the subsistence of the third public hearing of the independent investigative panel on alleged corruption, abuse of power, torture and other violations against the Nigerian Correctional Service. I want to do a quick summary of today's deliberation. Today, we focused on non-custodial measures and tried to look at the issues regarding the implementation of non-custodial measures in the country, and specifically highlighting the challenges faced by the Nigerian Correctional Service, as well as understanding the status in the implementation. The first part of today's session started by looking at issue about the use of fines, and also the use of compensation, specifically looking at options of fines. The panel did ask that the correctional service submit to it detailed information indicating the status of these statistics across our custodial centers. It also asked for information on the number of persons, number of inmates that were released pursuant to the action of the Honorable Minister of Interior, and the amount of money that was provided in dealing with that fact. Thank you. I think I will not mind. The CG covering this, you are not smiling, I thought you were going to smile. Are you sure you really want the water, you want me to cough and stop talking? Okay, I'm, I'm looking for any information that we got, because I think it's important to flag that information. Let me just get this, this information I'm trying to get relates to the total number that, of persons that, I think I have it on my notes, okay. Sorry, please indulge me, I want to get that information, it's important. I'm trying to, you know, I don't want to quote out of context, I just want to get the notes. The information that was made available to the panel is that as for December twenty twenty-three, the Honorable Minister of Interior was able to provide support that benefited four thousand and eighty-six inmates that were charged. that were charged for, that had option of fines and had compensation charged to them. The amount of money that was paid was five hundred and eighty-five million Naira. And this was funds that mobilized through his friends that had made contribution towards this. So the panel noted this and asked for a comprehensive information of, of all of the persons currently in all of the custodial centers in relation to this. It also in the same light asked the League of Aid Council of Nigeria to provide to it all of the instances where the League of Aid Council have provided fine, maybe in the past five, six, three more years or two, depending on what you have available. The panel pleaded with Fida MBA to take step to add his voice in relation to looking at having a more efficient system of administration of fine. The panel took concrete notice of the fact that many people who have option of fines have burden in terms of the feeding and maintenance of these people placed on the federal government. And yet, many a time, the fines are very little compared to the expenditure that the government will spend upon them, on them. So instances where persons have ten thousand Naira fine or six months, thirty thousand Naira fine or six months was noted as things that the panel frowned at. The panel asked for a comprehensive look on fine system that perhaps may look at better utilization of non-custodial measures that will in effect ensure that these monies are paid, not necessarily while they're in custody, so that those persons don't help, um, increase the population in the custodial centers, since we know that these persons are low-risk individuals, otherwise they won't be given option of fine in the first instance. The panel also likewise took notice of the current situation where some people who are unable to pay their fine have served the sentences in terms of those fines, but they had compensation which they have not been able to pay for it. And then asking that they claim, uh, deal around this, perhaps they need to support the establishment of Victims Remedies Fund that could help deal with some of these matters. The panel also looked at generally the implementation of section thirty-seven sub-one of the Nigerian Correctional Service Act of two thousand and nineteen in terms of the different other non-custodial measures, the issues about community service, probation, parole and restricted access. It took note of the submission of the correctional service in terms of the number of persons who they have in their records that have been able to administer each of these non-custodial measures. And the panel only asked that that statistics be broken down state by state. And the reason is to understand whether there are some states that are doing better than the others. There were a lot of other discussions that emanated. One of those discussions relates to the issue of payment of budgetary allocation, provision of budgetary allocation. The panel fronts at a situation where we have clear provision in law, something that if implemented, we save money for the government and yet there's no funding to make that possible. And therefore, the panel directs to Nigerian Correctional Service to submit to it since the establishment, or rather the, the since twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, we want to know exactly the amount that have come to non-custodial directorate. And please, if you can make that available for tomorrow, that would be appreciated. And in line with that, we want to know which of these years did the correctional service impute the request for funding of the non-custodial elements? So in other words, we want to know which months, you, which years you submitted it. And maybe you submitted and it was removed, or you submitted and later was given, or which years you didn't even submit in the first instance. We just want to know where we should start understanding what is happening. Because it's, it's possible that maybe you are not submitting, or maybe you submitted it as part of your budget and it was removed. Want to know so that we, or it was, we just really need to understand because we don't think it is the way to go. But we can't make recommendations if we don't understand what's happening. The panel also would like to know in respect to the number of staff that are currently serving under the non-custodial directorate, uh, which was mentioned as one thousand five hundred and sixty-three. The panel want to know the breakdown of this. We are realized from your submission, the Nigerian Correctional Service, that the highest number is in Kebi with one hundred and thirty-one and the lowest is in Emu with seven staff. So we want to understand the full statistics and, 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 uh, to be good. And then also in respect of the new recruitment you are having, we want to also know what is the plan? How many are going to be recruited to work in the non-custodial? It needs to, the panel want to understand whether there, what plan you have, so, um, in terms of that. There was comment about the fact that you do have some non-custodial officers in some local government.
In the same way, we would like to have the information regarding the states where correctional officers have these officers in court as non-custodial officers. And that information will also help us in, in being able to address them. There's a further information we require. We would like to know your plan regarding all of the, uh, the source materials, the standard, um, uh, standing order. You have non-custodial, your professional guidance, you have non-custodial and senior managers. But we want to understand at this moment, one, how many of your officers have been trained in this non-custodial? We want to know how many are trained. We want to know whether these tools are being used in the training institutions and maybe which one is being used and which one is not being used. And if there is a reason why it's not, please let us know so that we know what can be. In other words, let's the panel have as much information as possible, understand your situation and what can be done to be able to, um, address this, uh, from, from your perspective. Now, uh, I wanted also to mention, uh, clearly that the panel have footnote of the comments that were made by UNICEF and each submission of ten-point agenda, and those points will also be looked into and taken uh, into consideration to the extent that the panel deemed, um, relevant. The same also for the submissions made by United Action Against Corruption and Injustice International as well as Power and all of the suicide organizations that have spoken and made submissions since Monday. We would present solution, I would go behind that. All of the organizations, we will look at your submissions. So please make sure you, you send those you haven't sent, send soft copies too. It makes it an easier for, for the panel. Um, and finally, the panel, um, thanks the Chair of the PARO Board of Labour States, Milord Honorable Justice and the other states. And we have taken notes of his comment and the panel said they will bring the game, the matter with, with the interaction with the correctional service tomorrow. And we are testing that the correctional service submits the, the question he's asking in details. And clearly what he's asking is, in the two thousand and twenty-six budget, we would like to know the amount that make, the proportion of that funds that is being put for the non-custodial, including Paro. And we want also full details as to the implementation of section twenty-eight sub-one as well as sub-three, sub-one, sub-two, sub-three, we would like. To let us know which of the facilities we manage, if there are challenges and the things we lack them, please kindly make sure it comes to the attention of, of the, of, of the panel. I think for today's session, it is very clear that the issue of non-custodial measures is something that is supposed to help us as a nation address, uh, the varying population in terms of, in, in various custodial centers. So there are people who may not need to be treated in terms of being in custody and the panel feels that, um, this is something we should utilize and find a way, better way to, uh, uh, use this positively. But it's obvious that we do not seem to have adequate resources in dealing with that. So we would want to ensure that this really happens and ask for collaboration as well, including the judiciary and different law enforcement agencies, traditional rulers, um, faith-based organizations, suicide organizations, and as many people as possible in this regard. I mean, recently, in Anandra State, the Faculty of Social Sciences, about one hundred and forty-two or so students who have three months internship have said they will be able to join the non-custodial in Anandra to, for that period to see how they can assist by giving that time. But again, so even academic institutions, whatever it is. But again, as we said, even any volunteer coming, they must be equipped with training and they need to be equipped with oversight. So it, do not also forget that we are requesting semi-information regarding those who will come back. We're going to close now, but in closing, we want to act. Uh, okay, we will not close immediately. We will not close immediately because it would be good also to hear our chair, I'm sure you would like to do that. So we are going to do two things. One is an opportunity to ask, because there may be people here who may have some thoughts as to what else, what else can be done. I mean, it could be an advice to the panel, it could be an advice to the correctional service, it could be an advice to Nigeria as a whole. What can we do, you know, that could happen? Now that I have the MMA here, just to see if like, we might like him a lot because the other day we made the notes from his contact, so today he may make another one. Thanks, my sister, he will be encouraged. Okay, you know, in today we were focusing on non-custodial. There's a lot of need and collaborative collaboration in terms of medical practitioners, even in effective implementation of non-custodial measures, same as I work in the Nanda. For Paro, there is a process of assessment that needs to happen. And Paro first we need a medical assessment, including mental health assessment. Sometimes the, because Paro is given on the basis that you have been of good behavior while you're in custody. And also that you have been on, you have potential of being of good behavior when you go out. Part of that being of good behavior when you go out, maybe that you may need to continue to have set up your outside, uh, go for counseling another. So it would be nice to see how MMA and work prepares to begin to support this process. Probation, for example, if the court saying, I will not send you to custody, but I would allow you to serve outside, but on the condition you do X, Y, Z, which are really targeting the reduction of the risk that maybe you have to have committed other things. Take issue of drugs, issue of anger management, issue of margin score, whatever. So some of those times, if between the times, you are doing something in the custodial center, it will be something I see. I'm just giving you examples. Community service, for example, it is another non-custodial measure. Community service is about you, you paying back to society. So you work at no cost, nobody pays you fee, but you work. And you feel that it's very wonderful, instead of you going to be in custody and government will be feeding you. Why don't you work and the government won't pay you? Any work, so where it comes to you, so it must be a work that is public. So, for example, all your public hospitals, this is a way correctional service can help. Part of what we are working with them through the uncommissioning is we are helping them to, to understand what it means to have a designated community service center with a memorandum within the correctional service and them. And the correct, community service center should just be a place where the person can come and serve the communities. And key thing is that the place must have opportunity for, you know, logging in people and logging out. So you must monitor the person, why I said that the non-custodial of only play oversight. And secondly, you must quantify the level, because what will be the cost of that person? That if the correctional officer is, the person is just serving community service there. If you have employed somebody, how much will that person be paid to do that work? So there is a need, correctional service, please, there's a need that you, that you get this amount. We are just, there's been opportunity to produce a template that will help you to quantify. So you can read here, you can say, we were able to save social money for the government because those people who are working that place, they are not being paid. If they are not doing that work, this is what the government or whoever would have paid them. So for MMA, MMA, uh, cyber government hospitals, state government hospitals, uh, old people's homes, social care homes, you know, this kind of thing, because it has to be government facility. You know, so these are the kind of, I'm just trying to spare, this is medical, but that's not only limited to you. Any government agency, provided they are willing to, uh, work, comply with the, uh, MOU that is designed around this with, uh, uh, with the correctional service. Because once they do not meet keep that MOU, the correctional service should be able to go to the court, change their status as I said, these are the centers that we have MOU and they are functioning because. And compliance will be that when somebody comes in, somebody can say, yes, you are coming for this work.
And then you are able to quantify that. And if the correctional service comes, or officer comes in to check, you'll be able to be there. So there may be many more, you know, there could be other things that you can assist with. I just gave you examples of your support that is required in terms of the implementation of Paro. There is also a support that is required in terms of the implementation of probation and also of community service. There is also another section that I would want to encourage you to help us look at. It is section twenty-four. Uh, we discussed it today, we talked a little bit about mental, that, that section twenty-four is about, um, dealing. This section twenty-four is about mental health. The correctional service have established the same day they inaugurated the, the, uh, Paro Board. That same day, they inaugurated the state's mental health review board. And the mental health review board is supposed to chair by a psychiatrist and all of that, but they are not functioning. So again, is to see, is there any way the MMA can also help to collaborate, to do this and support? I mean, I'm just thinking that they could be, I can give you, yeah, I'll give you this law. And then here, section twenty-four is on, is there, all of the things are here. And we can all, I can also interact with you later to deal with that. But please, if there are people who will want to, uh, make further contribution because we, uh, um, uh, the, our chair will come in and address us. Okay, so if there are comment before, yes, Fida, please. Uh-huh, Fida, yes.
Okay, sorry, just before that, uh, you asked what kind of work, it's not only in public hospitals. Public schools, for example, they can still work there. A market, for example, they can still work there. Cleaning, yeah.
No, sorry, let me, no, let me explain, but the, it's not just mini work, it could be any work there. But the reason I told you I was speaking specifically in relation to medical, because of MMA. But it has to be work that is public, it can't be a private person's work.
Public.
And it's the, at the moment, they are all doing mini, mini thing. But in reality, if they, a, 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 a medical doctor is caught, you can be told to go and do medical service, if a teacher, you can be told to go and teach. So it's not only about sweeping, it's not only about mini job. Though now they do a lot of that, but the point I'm making is that at the moment, a lot of those persons, because it has to be skills that the person has, okay? A lot of people get, end up doing mini work. So even if they come there and you said you should be sweeping your hospital, whatever it is, and it is free, you are not supposed to pay. So, but the point is that you must get to a way to be able to have that MOU with the correctional service. But that's a way they can give something. No, no, it has to be statewide. And then, but then that list. And then, but then that list can then be sent because they have to deposit it to the court. But if you don't keep the terms of the MOU, they will go, give a list that does not include those hospitals. So it has to be clear which hospital, which location, because part of it is to do a location that is close to where that person is living. But you would see some of those things. They do not, the community service must be public. It can't be, and it can't even be going to do correctional service services. So there's, Fida would like, and once Fida said he wanted to speak, I started smiling because we are looking to see whether you can tell us some things you are also going to do.
Oh gosh, so I mean, earlier, like you said. Yes, okay, so partnership with NJI, NJI, sorry, for training for judges. I know for a fact, for the correctional service, the challenges they have in terms of the judiciary wanting to take, you know, play their role in terms of probation. It's a known fact, I know a couple of officers here that we've met in court and I have witnessed it firsthand. And so there is definitely a need for engagement with the judiciary on that. But I wanted to speak on a partnership that I think sometime in May, the correctional service had said that they got support from ROLAC, receiving five hundred devices, so monitoring, electronic monitoring devices. And so we were supposed to come up with like a framework for that, but I didn't hear anything about it, so what the implementation is. And then, I don't know when they intend to maybe start using it because it was towards supporting non-custodial measures also.
They said, the, I don't know whether the ministry purchase any electronic tagging? Was that, maybe he wants to know, do you have an electronic tagging? Because somebody was saying something like that before. Please. Okay, so he said, have you started using it? That's what she's asking. Okay. Okay, maybe that's acceptable. So if it is ROLAC, I'm sure those states would be their focus states. And that would be Platu, Adama, Adamaa, Kanu, Edu, Annambra, Abia and Lagos. Where did, and FCT, no, FCT is not assistant, okay. Do you want to do something to, okay, all right then. NJI, I think it's a very important point you raised because it's about building capacities of judicial officers. In the past, I know that they have engaged power to do some, but training, but it's been for a while now, past three years, so I didn't get any invitation. But I know that we've done some training for judges and magistrates on non-custodial. But it's, but this is usually, they are short sessions. So maybe one needs to discuss with the administrator and find out whether there's been more we can do along with them. Yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for granting me the permission to step out. We just saw in our new Controller General of the Federal Fire Service this afternoon, following the retirement of the previous one. So thank you and thank you for great job that you have done. I hear we have reached the end of this public hearing. I'm not the one to give the vote of thanks, but I want to especially appreciate every one of you, all the institutions here represented and more importantly, the Nigerian Correctional Service. Thank you so much to the media for great coverage, for the live streaming. We do appreciate you. But just to say that if there are more informations that you want to give us, please kindly share with the secretariat, our email addresses is available, phone numbers to contact are also there. We will be having a closed session tomorrow, so it's strictly by invitation. But if you have any submission to make to us tomorrow, you can bring it, I'm sure the secretarial staff will attend to you outside. I want to appreciate every one of you and for Nigerians who have been online observing, contributing to this public hearing. I pray that the Lord will bless all of us and help us to take steps that will move the correctional service, the officers and our clients forward. Thank you. Yes, we've come to the end of today's deliberation. But I want to, the last, last stuff we are going to do is to ask for the vote of thanks. And the vote of thanks will be given by Mrs. Mudupe Anyelechi, who is the special advisor to the Honorable Minister of Interior on Parliamentary Services. She's a member of also this panel. And immediately after she's done, as usual, media, if you need terminus with us, let us know. If not, we're going to, go ahead.
Good day, everyone. On behalf of the chairperson of this panel and Premier Secretary of Ministry of Interior, Dr. Magdalene Ajani and other members of the panel, I wish to express our gratitude to Almighty God for making it possible for us to be here present today. I especially thank the Honorable Minister of Interior, Dr. Bumi Tunde Ujo, for constitution this investigative panel. You will all agree with me that it is a bold step, as it is uncommon to find someone investigating himself or herself. I say this because the correctional service is one of the agencies under his watch. Thank you very much, sir, for your leadership style and transparency. Our appreciation goes to all who have participated actively in this public hearing, especially those who have been with us since Monday, the eleventh of August, twenty twenty-five. Lacan, Spidel, NMA, Fida, UNODC, those of you who participated online as well, among others. Your presence and invaluable contributions will no doubt greatly enrich the report of this panel. To our friends from the fourth estate of the realm, I say thank you very much for your elaborate coverage of our proceedings. Finally, there's a saying that you don't thank yourself. But please permit me to however deservedly thank the chairperson of this panel, Dr. Magdalene Ajani, for her commitment and dedication towards the success of this panel so far. Despite her obvious busy schedules, she has actively and constantly participated in all the activities without delegating her duties or leading from the rear. For instance, she personally visited a number of correctional facilities in the country for on-the-spot assessments. For those who were present during the first and second public hearings, the chairperson was fully present and also during this third final public hearing. This has been a source of strength because she could have chosen to act otherwise. May I therefore please ask everyone to rise to appreciate her with a resounding ovation? Thank you very much. Sorry, I may have our seats. I also want to thank the CG of Correctional Service and his team who have been so, so cooperative. Thank you so very much and extend our gratitude to your CG. Today, like they've said, marks the end of the public session, sorry, hearing. As earlier mentioned by the secretary and the chairperson, tomorrow is a closed session. On that note, once again, you are highly appreciated and we wish you all the very best of luck. Enjoy the rest of the day. God bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria and God bless the Ministry of Interior. Thank you.
Media, do you have any need for interaction? They said you want to go, it's no need. Please, national anthem. They said there is no need, so there's, okay, ask your questions, please. Okay, no problem. After the national anthem then.
Thank you very much. May we please be outstanding for the national anthem?
Nigeria, we hail thee, our own dear native land! Good tribe, but on the deep earth, if brotherhood misdealt. Nigerians, all them proud to serve, our suffering motherland!
Thank you. Please, for those who have submissions, you can see the panel secretary just outside.